I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission of January 20th, 2021. A printed agenda is available outside the hearing room, and a copy of the full agenda, including the staff reports, is available at the front of the chambers with the clerk. The Open Meetings Act is posted just inside the doors at the back of the room. In order to meet the required social distancing protocols, we must limit the number of people inside the chambers. Therefore, no more than 18 individuals will be allowed in the chambers at once, excluding Planning Commission members and staff. Staff is assisting individuals who are present and wish to testify on items on today's agenda by ensuring that each person has signed in. Staff will direct you into the chambers based on what items you are testifying on and your position on that item. Due to the increased number of individuals anticipated to be present to testify on the proposed wind energy text amendment, the hearing could go past 8:00 PM. Therefore, once you have testified, we recommend that you exit the chambers using the right doors to the right of the Diaz, and you are encouraged to leave the building to help with crowd control and adherence to the required social distancing protocols. Based on estimations, we are staggering the times of various hearings over several hours. These times are identified in parentheses on the agenda. We are encouraging attendees to arrive no more than 15 minutes before their scheduled hearing. Please note that an agenda item will not begin before the time posted. In the event that the allocated hearing times go quicker than estimated, there will be breaks in the hearing. If you parked in the parking garage across the street to the north, the gate is open and no parking coupons are necessary. Out of courtesy for those attending this meeting, the commissioners and the staff, cellular phone usage is not permitted in these chambers during any portion of this meeting. We appreciate your cooperation. Please note that the Planning Commission action today is final on Agenda Item 1.3, Use Permit 18005A. Any aggrieved person may appeal final action of the Planning Commission to the City Council or the County Board by filing a notice of appeal with the clerk within 14 days following the action of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission action on all other items is a recommendation to the City Council or the County Board. The first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held January 6, 2021.
So move, Campbell.
Second, Beckyus.
Jerry?
Okay, Ball.
Can I? Because I was absent?
Are you abstaining?
Abstaining, yes.
Okay. Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Motion carried, 5 to 0.
The next item of business is the Consent Agenda. Items on the Consent Agenda will be called at the same time and will not be scheduled for a separate public hearing unless there is a request from someone wishing to speak on that item or at the request of a commission member. I will ask Jerry to read all of the Consent Agenda items into the record. Once those items are read, she will ask if there is anyone wishing to speak. If you wish to speak on an item on the Consent Agenda, we would ask that you stand and state that item. That item will then be removed from the Consent Agenda and scheduled as a separate public hearing under Section 3 of today's agenda. All remaining items on the Consent Agenda will be voted upon in total with a motion for approval. Jerry, will you please call the items on the Consent Agenda?
Yes, thank you. First, I'd like to note that although Commissioner Shear is not present today, he did declare a conflict of interest on Agenda Item 1.4, which is miscellaneous 20003 on today's Consent Agenda. First item is Item 1.1, Comprehensive Plan Conformance 20018, to review as to conformance with the 2040 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan, two proposed amendments to the south of downtown redevelopment and strategic plan. One, the first one being extending the boundary of the plan south to include the area between 16th and 17th Streets to Garfield Street. And the second amendment is adding the 1645 Washington Street redevelopment project for renovation of an existing eight-unit apartment building on property generally located at 1645 Washington Street. Item 1.2 is change of zone 20040 from R2 Residential District to B1 Local Business District on property generally located at 3930 South Street. Item 1.3 is use permit 18005A to amend existing use permit 18005 to expand it by approximately .82 acres to allow signs in adjacent outlots on property generally located at South 84th Street and Firethorn Lane. I would note that this is final action by the Planning Commission unless appealed to the City Council within 14 days. Item 1.4 is miscellaneous 20003 to review the proposed determination that the Wayuka West redevelopment area be declared a blighted and substandard area as defined by the Nebraska Community Development Law. The study area is generally located from O Street to Vine Street between North 35th Street and the west portion of Wayuka Cemetery. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on these items?
I don't see any.
Are there any ex parte communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting any of these sites?
I don't think so.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak on any of these Consent Agenda items? If so, please stand and state that item.
Okay, I think we're good. I would entertain a motion.
I would move to approve the Consent Agenda.
Second, Edgerton?
Go ahead, Jerry.
Okay. Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Motion carried, 6 to 0.
There are no requests for deferral, so we will now proceed to public hearings. The staff will make a brief presentation. The applicant will then be requested to present his or her testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff will then be given an opportunity to respond to the testimony, and then the applicant shall have an opportunity for rebuttal. Each person testifying should state their name and address, and shall have five minutes to speak unless additional time is requested and granted. The timer will go off after four minutes. The clerk will then indicate you have one minute remaining to wrap up your testimony. Once the final minute has lapsed, the clerk will indicate that your time is up. If during your testimony you have copies of documents or materials you would like distributed to the Planning Commission members and/or included as part of the record, please place the information in the folder on the podium. The Planning Commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing unless the Commission votes to defer action or continue the public hearing. Jerry, will you please call the first public hearing item?
Yes. Item 4.1 is change of zone 15016B, to amend the Wilderness Creek Planned Unit Development by revising the site plan and a change of zone from R3 Residential District to R5 Residential District on property generally located at South 33rd and Wilderness Hills Boulevard. Staff recommendation is conditional approval. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed?
I don't see any.
Are there any ex parte communications that took place or additional information that you learned while visiting this site?
I don't think we have those either. All right. Mr. Chaka.
Good afternoon. Tom Chaka, Planning Staff. This application is to amend an existing planned unit development, PUD, by replacing 18 townhome lots and 58 single-family lots with a 480-unit apartment complex. It's generally located at South 33rd and Yankee Hill Road. This is the area of the amendment, and then this is the boundary of the PUD. The site plan again shows, basically just shows a blank lot right now. The emphasis of this application is to get the change to the use approved and the density. There's also a change of zone from R3 to R5 that goes along with this. If approved, detailed plans for grading drainage would be done by administrative amendment. The applicant is also requesting an increase in the height from 35 feet to 55 feet. This apartment complex that was approved previously had a waiver approved for 55 feet. Off the drawing here is another apartment complex that had a waiver increase. I believe that one was to 50 feet. Planning is proposing a condition that if the apartment complex is 35 feet or less in height, it can meet the R5 setback along here. This east lot line would be 10 feet. If it's over 35 feet, the height would be, the setback would be half of the height of the building. And that is Condition 1.6, which is being amended. So that details it there. The rest of the PUD areas is not being revised, remains the same. The commercial square footage along Yankee Hill Road is not changing. So, oh yeah, there was a neighborhood meeting held on January 7 via Zoom. There were three people in attendance other than the developers, engineer, and others. Three neighborhood people in attendance. So, the height waiver is, planning agrees with the height waiver, considering other apartment complexes in the area have been granted the same type of waiver. Any questions?
So, on the right side of the development, that's where the trail is, is that correct?
Yes, there's a future trail coming through here.
Okay, so is that the reason for the height recommendation on that side?
Yes, after discussion with Parks Department. And part of the reason for that is to, you know, give a further setback to the trail and plus allow for more sunlight to hit the trail.
So that it would move to 20 feet then?
It would only, well, typically these apartments are 50 to 55 feet. So let's say their height will be 55 feet. If it's 55 feet, the setback will be 27.5 feet.
Plus the 10-foot that exists.
No, not plus the 10 feet.
It just beats the 27.5.
Correct.
Okay. One other question. So the complex R5, you said received the waiver, right, for?
The existing one to the south. It got a waiver to height of 55 feet.
Is there a similar complex on the east side, southeast of the proposed location?
There are more, yeah, there are apartments over here.
Okay. Some of the waiver or different?
I believe those, trying to find it in the list here, but I'm pretty sure those have got a waiver also. And then, like I said, there's one over here too that's not on here. Probably see on the aerial. That one, I believe the waiver was to 50 feet. Yeah, I think you were referring to the apartments over here.
Further to the east and north, so right by 38th Street? Yes, in that?
There's one apartment complex here that's part of, within this PUD. It got a waiver to 55 feet. There's another apartment complex here that's outside of this PUD. They got a waiver, I believe it was to 50 feet. And there's some more, there's another apartment complex over here. And I think that one was either 50 or 55 feet.
I had a question about the number of dwelling units. I just, and I'm sure it's correct, I just want to make sure I understand. So, under your staff analysis point number four is where you talk about the maximum density for R3 versus R5, given the size of this site.
Correct.
So, if, so the 480 dwelling units that are requested here, obviously, I'm confused by the 480 number and the 718 number and the 677 number. And I was wondering if you could just clarify that for me.
So, there's a density calculation you do where you get so many units per acre. So based on that, under R5, they could have a total of 677 units, but they're only requesting 480 for this apartment complex.
So the 677 is for this unit, not the PUD as a whole?
The 677 is just showing that they could have had up to that.
Okay.
So then you take the 480 for the new apartment complex and add up the other apartment complex and the single-family lots, it adds up to 718 dwelling units total for the entire PUD.
So the maximum density of 677 isn't about the PUD as a whole, it's only with regard to this new area?
Well, correct. Within this new area, they could have had up to 677, but we're not approving that, and they're not asking for that.
Got it. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions for Tom right now? Okay, thank you. Applicant?
Good afternoon. Commissioners Brad Marshall with Olson here on behalf of Lincoln Federal Bankor is the applicant for the changes presented before you for the Wilderness Creek PUD. First, thank you to Tom. He's been really good to work with here on this change. This is a PUD that's gone through a couple of changes over the last couple of years. Like he said, we did have a public virtual meeting. It's kind of become the standard norm of the late, and we had a couple of individuals. One resident was a townhome owner across the creek and way, and then two were HOA members of Wilderness Hills. And so, glad they were able to attend that meeting. They were hopefully able to take that to their normal monthly meeting for HOA, which was actually last night, and I hadn't heard anything since then. So, hope they had a chance to discuss that as well. And that extended to make sure that they knew today's meeting was happening and then the rest of the process if this were to move forward with the city councils, excuse me. So, like I said, there's been a kind of, kind of couple of changes, and I'll just kind of walk you through the particular area. Again, it's surrounded with multifamily to the west with apartments. There's a couple of WH flats and Aventine Apartments, Baxter, Toyota, and Lexus commercial areas to the north. There's approximately 50 or so townhomes directly to the east that are almost, almost completely built out and becoming occupied. And then LPS does have a parcel of ground to the south and directly to south still an undeveloped area. This is a 2020 aerial image, so you can kind of see where the line of homes start and end here adjacent to the property. So this is a PUD that we brought forward back in 2015, and it was originally approved. And the area in red, I just wanted, this is the area of application we're changing from R3 to R5. Did originally include a small, smaller, I should say, apartment complex and a higher density with some adjacent townhomes on the eastern half of that. In 2018, we came forward. Tom kind of showed, I've kind of got this cut off, but we came forward and we added some apartments on the south southeast portion, which is kind of down in this area, and transitioned that and changed this to townhomes and attached and detached in that area. So, almost coming full circle. We're back again. And so, the application is to change from the R3 that we changed a couple of years ago to an R5. The R5 does have that height waiver that we are asking to be extended for the multifamily, the apartment complex here. 55 feet is the request from 35 to 55. As Tom pointed out, there's several applications or approvals of apartment complexes in the general area that have had around that 50 or 55 foot. I think Aristo, which is across the street on 40th, Wilderness Heights, is 55 feet. Chateau, which is the old, the developing Yankee Hill Golf Course has height waiver, I think, is 50 or 55 as well. So, and then we do also support, I guess, the changes that Tom has brought forward on the reduction of the, or I guess the changes of the setback and concern from the trail on the east side of the property. And so, we would ask you to approve, improve with those that change to Condition 1.6. Are there any questions? I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Dick?
Where was the 52 single-family in the 220 commercial space?
So, still, this is being the map of what's being proposed. You can kind of see the area of application is a blank slate. As Tom indicated, another application would have to be submitted administratively to the planning staff for review of, to go through the intricacies of the site details and grading drainage and so forth. And then, there's an H4 zoning that kind of is an L shape, and that's where the 120, I believe, I might even have that wrong. Well, I think it's actually up to 220 now. I think there was a administrative amendment that bumped it up for this. There's a corner here that I don't show on my map. But that's on the south side of Ohensie. The 52 single-family, these are attached, units are here, as I indicated. As I indicated, they're, are building out and, and close to being built out now, so.
So it's, those figures apply to the whole PUD then?
It does, yes.
Thank you.
Yep, absolutely. And I, and I don't, as we were, this is an image that I was using for, for our online or virtual, and I did not include, this does have, I think, 300 units on the multifamily south of Ohensie with the multifamily as well.
Any other questions for Brad? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any testimony in support of this application? Testimony in support? Okay, testimony in opposition? Any testimony in opposition? Okay. Well, did anyone have further questions for staff?
Nope.
No.
No? Okay, well...
I would move that we close the public hearing.
Second, Edgerton. Yuri?
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Raymond Yost?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
I would move that we approve the Zone 15016B for the amendment to it.
Second, Edgerton. Discussion?
This fits very much with what's all around it and backs up the car dealerships appropriately. So I see nothing wrong with this.
I appreciate the additional setback requirements with regard to the proposed trail. I think that's useful for the area and think, think this makes a lot of sense.
I agree. I think the height waiver is appropriate for the location and also because we've got some similar height waivers right, right next door and a little ways away. So I will be supporting this, too.
Yuri?
Okay, this would be for the conditional approval of Change of Zone 15016B as revised for the staff report. Campbell, or I'm sorry, Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Raymond Yost?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Since the next item on our agenda isn't scheduled to start until 2:00 PM, we will have a break until, until 2:00 o'clock.
After you have questions. Sorry, sorry. I'll be here till the end.
Okay, it's 2:00 PM, so we'll go ahead and pick back up with our hearing here. Just a reminder that due to the anticipated large number of individuals wanting to testify on the next agenda item, text amendment 20008, the proposed amendments to the wind energy regulations, please understand that we will adhere to the five-minute limitation. Testimony will be taken from individuals in the order of sign-in based on position, beginning with support, neutral, and then opposition. The clerk will call three names from the sign-in sheets. When your name is called, please be prepared to come forward to testify. Before presenting your testimony, please be sure to state your name, spell your last name, and give your address. If you are representing a group of individuals, I would suggest that you identify a spokesperson to provide the testimony on behalf of the group and have the group members stand to show their support for your position. If during your testimony you have copies of documents or materials you would like distributed to the planning commission members and/or included as part of the record, please place the information in the folder on the podium. The planning commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing unless the commission votes to defer action or continue the public hearing. Breaks will be taken as necessary. Jerry, will you please call the next public hearing item?
Yes, thank you. Item 4.2 is text amendment 20008 to amend Article 13.048, Sections G through J, and other amendments throughout Article 13.048 as necessary for harmonization and consistency of the Lancaster County zoning regulations regarding commercial wind energy conversion systems. Staff recommendation is for the approval of two of the revisions. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on this item?
I do not see any.
Okay. Steve Hendrickson with the Planning Department. Did want to note that we do have a copy of the Lancaster zoning regulations on file. Today, both myself and Chris Schroeder will do a very brief presentation, as much as we can, to address the items that were in the staff report. We also have Pam Dingman here, who will be available, has a few comments and also questions. And County Attorney Jen Holloway is also available by Zoom if you have any questions. So this is a request from the Lancaster County Board. It's a bit unusual to have a request from the board versus a private application. And they asked that the Planning Department look at four different areas of our county zoning regulations regarding commercial wind energy systems. So we will go over each of those four items. But before we go into each of them one by one, we did want to give a very quick history because we did not have a chance to have a briefing for all of the planning commission members. And some of you are new to this topic, and some of you are maybe perhaps like me that are a little rusty on it, and so it took me some time to go back over everything. So we will try to be very brief. This all started in 2015 when we had a working group, a very large public process, lots of public meetings, to come up with a very significant revision to the regulations. And that was approved in November 2015. In terms of non-participating properties, there were really four areas to try to address the impact on properties that were not part of the proposal. That was shadow flicker, the wind turbines going past somebody's window, setbacks, the noise standards, and also something in regard to the impact on a vacant lot. So that was the four areas, and three of those areas, the County Board asked us to take a look at making some changes, though no specific proposal from the County Board was given to the Planning Department. Now, the text as it is today also includes provisions about decommissioning, protection of endangered species in view corridors, road maintenance agreements, noise monitoring and complaints, and all of those are not under consideration today. So there's a lot of other sections, so if there's perhaps a comment about what are you doing about this or that, well, a lot of those things are already addressed and they're not proposed for being changed. So that was the November 2015. Then in November of 2018, NextEra, a wind developer, came forward with their own text amendment to address some changes to participating properties. Now, a participating property is one where the owner has signed some type of a contract, and they don't necessarily have a wind turbine on their property, but they are being reimbursed to allow that wind turbine perhaps to be closer to them. And so in November 2018, that text amendment went forward. The Health Department reviewed the impact on people who are participating because that impact is often very different in terms of the level of annoyance from people who are not participating, and agreed with the text amendment, which was then approved in March of 2019. As a part of that review, NextEra had Epsilon Associates conduct a hypothetical sound modeling at the 37 decibel level. 37 decibels is the nighttime noise level that we have today. That's our standard since 2015. And their kind of hypothetical, which looked at a turbine of 500 feet tall on 157 homes, it found that in order to maintain the 37 decibel level, you need to be about a mile away. There's topography and other things that come into impact, but it was about a mile away. A lot of the comments that you have received are people saying, please keep the setback at the one-mile distance. And so what we're trying to clarify here is the setback isn't one mile, but effectively the noise standards result in a spacing, let's say, effectively of about one mile. And we'll talk about the recommendation, but we're not recommending any changes to the noise standards, so effectively that part So effectively, that part of it, to try to protect the public health, remains at about a one-mile effective range. Okay, so the four requests. The first request is to change the setback to a non-participating dwelling unit. Currently, that setback says, the setback shall be two times the turbine height. That's the height to the hub all the way to the very top of the blade. You go two times that height, or five times the turbine height, measured to the exterior wall of the dwelling unit from the turbine, but a minimum 1,000 feet. That was actually changed from three and a half times the turbine height in March of 2019. So for, as a part of that change, the County Board went and changed that particular part of it. And so in our review, they asked us, hey, take a look at the setback. To us, that setback was more about the visual impact of a turbine on a non-participating property owner than the health impact. So we were looking at how much does a large hub deck like a wind turbine, to give you some reference, the Nebraska State Capitol is approximately 400 feet to the top of the sewer. So if you're looking at a 500 or 700-foot-tall turbine, how does that visually loom over you? And so we did take a look at that, and we think it is appropriate to change that from five times back to three and a half times, which was the original 2015 standard, and was the standard up until the County Board changed it in March of 2019. We would note that when you talk about setbacks, even a setback of three and a half times is quite substantial, though it is not as substantial as the animal feeding operation setbacks that were just established by the County Board in March of 2020. And we think it's important to quickly note those for some comparability. So for an animal feeding operation, that is usually a one-story-tall building, but the odor is more of the impact, the setback there is one mile to an open animal feeding operation to a dwelling unit, or between a half a mile and three-quarters of a mile if it's an enclosed operation, depending on the size. The setback is one mile to one and a half miles to an animal feeding operation to things like cemetery schools and healthcare facilities. So the setback to an animal feeding operation to like a school is actually much larger in an animal feeding operation than even our current standards for the commercial wind energy, just in terms of comparison. So we'd also note that when that was adopted, we have not had any applications for animal feeding operations since that time, and we did a map to show the impact of that that effectively showed there was no place in the county that you could probably have a new operation. So effectively, we're probably not going to have any new animal feeding operations in the county because of our setbacks. But for the item number one, we do recommend to go back to the 3.5 times the turbine height. The second request was to address the vacant lot. And back in 2015, we heard a lot of property owners, particularly in the southwest part of the county, where they have a three-acre, a five-acre, a 10-acre lot that is a legal buildable lot, and they plan to build a house on it someday. Now, our noise standards go to a dwelling unit. They were concerned that these are properties that don't have dwelling units on them, so the turbines could get approved, and the impact could be quite severe on their property. And so we did a little diagram at that time, and that diagram was to try to show that here is a hypothetical three-acre lot, here is the wind turbine, here are the various noise levels, 45 decibels, 40 decibels. And so the wind turbine would have the legal right, unless there was some separate standard protecting the vacant lots, to go ahead and locate there, and the person would still have the right to build their house. So you're not taking away the right to build their house, but what they're pointing out is, hey, on this lot, I'm going to be above that nighttime decibel level that you think is protective of public health. And so you're having an impact on my vacant lot. And so this standard says that at least three acres, let's say this was a 20-acre lot, at least three acres has to remain outside of those setbacks and noise decibel levels. Leave a person at least three acres, if they have 20, if they have 60, if they have 80, leave them at least three. If they only have three, well, then that would be the entire lot. So we think that is something that is protective of existing acreage lots in the county, and so we looked at it as requested by the County Board, and we do not think that you should make any changes to that particular regulation. We think it is really the only thing that is protecting the vacant lots. The other thing I'll very quickly address, and then we'll have Chris Schroeder, if you want to come up and talk about the noise standards, is the fourth item is a very simple amendment that when the applicant turns in a noise study, it should be done by a third party. That was the intent, that it wasn't going to be done by the Health Department, it wasn't going to be the applicant. You'd hire a third party to do the study. And we think that's a very nice little clarification, and so we recommend approval of that, and also changing the setback to 3.5. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Chris then to talk about the fourth request, which was about the noise standards.
Good afternoon. Chris Schroeder with the Health Department. So we are not recommending a change into the noise levels at this time. I'm sure you guys are all aware that we've been extremely busy with responding to the pandemic, so we just haven't had the time to conduct the thorough research that we did in the past, you know, looking at submitted materials, looking at, you know, doing research for, you know, other peer-reviewed scientific studies. In the past, we spent hundreds of hours of doing this, so again, we just haven't had the time to do that. And then in addition, you know, we feel like, you know, there should be a more comprehensive public process from what we did in the past in 2015 and a little bit in 2018. We had briefings with the Planning Commission to talk about, you know, noise in general, to explain it, to give you a better foundation when we are discussing changes in noise levels. We also had briefings with the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners as well. So again, those are our three main reasons why, at this time, we don't recommend changing the noise standard until we can free up some staff time to devote to a significant effort in looking at the research.
Okay, if I can just kind of conclude then. So because of the obvious need to have the focus on the pandemic and dealing with also the distribution, we also agree that we think that our recommendation on this is that it should be a much larger public process, and that really, in our previous times, we spent an awful lot of time also briefing the Planning Commission and the public on what were those noise standards and what were the studies saying? Because there's an awful lot of studies, even a novice like myself, you know, there's a lot of conflicting information, and it was very helpful to have the Health Department sort out and look at all those various studies, and they took, I think, quite seriously every study that was submitted by people, both for and against, to look at what the impact that might have on that. So we think that is important to have that. We'd also really want to address one of the things that is often mentioned by people who have written to you in favor of wind energy. The Comprehensive Plan is clearly in favor of wind energy and sustainability. But I think what we would note here is that you can support wind energy, and it is not necessarily within the county. We can purchase wind energy, LES can purchase wind energy even if it's located in other parts of Nebraska or other states. To us, it's kind of like you may have a goal about having clothing made sustainably, but it doesn't mean that all the clothing has to be made within Lancaster County. You might have goals about humane treatment of animals, but it doesn't mean that every chicken that is eaten in Lancaster County is necessarily raised in Lancaster County. As a matter of fact, it would be quite difficult under our standards to do that. We'd also note that too, that while a lot of comparisons are made to other parts of the state where wind turbines have developed, we'd like to point out, our county is very different than most of the other counties in the state. We have 8,670 dwelling units at a minimum that are outside of Lincoln and the Incorporated Communities scattered throughout the county, and that is very different. That's actually more dwelling units than you see in a lot of other counties. And so, and they're wildly scattered, and so it is very difficult, we think, to try to locate a wind turbine development and still try to address that impact. And we would also note that certainly every wind developer has the ability to get as many of these houses that are out there to participate, to go ahead and reimburse them for their impact. So with that, that concludes then the staff recommendations on that. We'd first take any questions you have for either Chris or I at this point, and then if afterward, done answering any questions, we'll then go to County Engineer Pam Dingman.
Tom?
Thank you. As Steve mentioned, I too went back and read some of our notes from the last time that we all met to discuss this, because a little rusty is correct. And Chris, I just wanted to go over and reiterate some things that I think we discussed last time, and you may not remember off the top of your head, but if I remember correctly, and I went through our notes here, I think that the Health Department's primary concern last time was the health outcome associated with noise. Is that a fair assessment?
Noise and causing annoyance, that's correct.
Causing annoyance and the health impact, the potential health impact that that annoyance may cause further down the road, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, okay. And then I was looking over, Chris, what we currently have in the code, as I understand it, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, but I think that we had separate hours from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. at a 40-decibel maximum, and different levels from 10:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m., and then for participating property, a different measure as well of, I think, 50 decibels, something along those lines. And could you give me a frame of reference again? Because I think the last time we talked about this, Chris, I think we talked about a dishwasher or something, if my memory serves me correctly, or vacuum at about decibel level that we're talking about. Could you?
Well, that's hard to kind of recollect that, but one thing to keep in mind is that wind turbine noise is different, so at a lower level, it can be more annoying, is what a lot of the research says.
Sure. And could you talk a little bit about how that?
Right, it's because of the characteristic of it, and it's called, you know, digging back in the memory here, but amplitude modulation, you know, the changing and the loudness of it can be more annoying. And one thing to keep in mind on noise is that it is on a logarithmic scale. So someone says, oh, we're just going to increase it five decibels. That's nearly 50% louder, something to keep in mind. So if you're talking about a 10-decibel increase, that's twice as loud. So just some numbers to keep in mind, whatever before you again, talking about changing the actual levels.
If, okay. I think we'll see you a lot, Chris.
Missed you guys. Been a while.
You needed a break from pandemic stuff, right?
Yeah.
Thank you, Chris.
Tracy?
Yeah.
To both of you, correct me if I'm not following this right, but even though you're recommending moving from the five down to the three and a half times the turbine's height, the noise regulations would create a greater distance
Correct.
than that three and a half.
Right, correct.
So really, the noise levels and regulations would supersede the setback.
Correct.
Yes.
But we think it's still important to have the setbacks for that visual part of it.
Right.
And potentially ultimately, if technology in the long term found a way to make turbines quieter and quieter, maybe eventually you get to the point where the setback is greater than the noise standard.
Right.
But currently, given the size of the structures and just simply blades moving through the air, there's still noise generated.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for staff? Okay.
Okay. At this point, we'll turn it over to Pam Dingman, and then after Pam Dingman, we will go to people who are in favor and who are in person.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. I must be a little shorter than Steve. I'm kind of sad that I'm not going to get to use magnified amplitude or exponential today as an engineer, but I guess we'll leave that to the Health Department. I did just want to talk about my concern in general. It's not necessarily a concern that is brought up for being changed in the regulation today, but I am concerned about the county's need to have a road maintenance agreement for these structures. In particular, I'm concerned that when we issue these special permits and we have road maintenance agreements, they're very difficult to enforce. For example, with borrow pits, if they create dust, our residents of Lancaster County have a tendency to think that all dust is the responsibility of the borrow pit, and so as at the County Engineers Department, then we're trying to sort out, okay, who's, what dust belongs to a borrow pit and what dust belongs to just general traffic on the road. We have concerns overall about these facilities damaging our roads, and in particular, we have concerns with our bridges. So as you're aware from previous presentations from me, Lancaster County has 300 bridges. I'm going to switch. And what I've put on the overhead is the bridges in Lancaster County that are load-posted, and so they wouldn't be able to carry a standard load, i.e. like a full concrete truck. There are several of them, as well as bridges in Lancaster County that we have concerns about the abutments being stable on. These are our scour critical bridges. And lastly, many of these loads would exceed any allowable load for our standard bridge. I did go ahead and draw a black line on every mile that wouldn't be able to have this equipment driven across. We do these exercises for overweight loads in Lancaster County all the time, but I do think it is worth drawing your attention to. I did call Saline County. Saline County has a number of these sort of facilities that have been installed recently, and they do that with a road maintenance agreement. They do not allow any of this equipment to be hauled over any of their bridges, and in order to get the equipment to the site, they had to replace 30 culvert pipes this last year. So that is, of course, significant of note, and also, they've limited what roads that this equipment can be hauled on. Of course, the catch is, you have to catch the people on the road they're not supposed to be on to hold them accountable. They did assign a fine amount for not being on the road you were supposed to be on, which was $2,000 to $5,000. They've now collected $76,000 in fines. So I just think it should be one of those things noted for the record, that our department is not really set up to police these sort of operations, and we are concerned about what it might do to our facilities in the future.
Pam, I want to clarify, so this is not only when they're building the turbine, but also when they're maintaining it, you know, for the next however many years.
Yeah, it depends on what they're going to have to bring in to maintain that. And so the building, of course, is the actual turbine parts, and then it does require a large amount of concrete to get the base in there. And so given the state of our infrastructure, we just have concerns about how we're going to get it there. I unfortunately don't have a database yet, although I'm getting closer to one, and so maybe by the time this gets to the commissioners, I'll have a better output. But we have 6,000 pipe culverts in Lancaster County. We know that we've reached a point where we have random failures across the county due to our lack of funding and lack of maintenance, and we're just not able to get caught up with a replacement. So without knowing what routes these would have to take, I think it's probably easy to surmise that there would have to be a large amount of pipe culverts replaced in Lancaster County in order to install these sort of facilities.
If I may ask a question, Pam? So the things that are in front of us today don't deal with the road maintenance agreements.
That is correct.
And the text amendments that were passed previously, there was mention of the road maintenance agreement. Are you, is it your position that the text that's currently in place that's not in front of us today is not adequate?
I think if we're going to take a broader look in the future, as the Planning Department stated, that this is one of those things that we need to take a broader look at, and I just, I felt that I would be remiss in my duties as county engineer if I at least didn't bring it forward today as a continued concern of my department.
Thank you.
Dick?
Pam, do we have regulations in place for the large chicken operation in the South on the roads?
So that is also So that is also a special permit. And and what we have to do is we create a road maintenance agreement. We negotiate, and so it would be the same sort of situation. And again, the concern is that they're difficult to enforce for us as the county. We're just not set up in county engineering to be the enforcers of these. And they do become somewhat egregious from time to time.
And the County Sheriff's Office says they can't enforce them either?
Well, you know, I haven't talked one on one with Terry Wagner about it, but it's been my understanding that it it's our duty to enforce it. Our department is where the calls come from because the agreement is associated with our roads and made by us, so. It does put me in a bit of a situation of kind of being law enforcement, which I'd really rather be an engineer, Dick.
You don't like to make citizens arrests?
You know, I'm going to stick to engineering on any given day. That is what I'm good at, and that is the lane I'm going to stay in.
Any further questions? Thank you, Pam. Okay, so we'll continue on with testimony in support of the application.
Okay, and I'll call the I guess there's three individuals in person to testify. Amanda Callaway, David Levi, and Greg Schwaninger. So if we could come up in that order.
Can I take this off? Okay. Hi. My name is Amanda Callaway, C.A.L.L.A.W.A.Y. My address is 6240 Ballard Avenue. I'm here today representing Nebraska Conservation voters. We are in support of the development of wind energy in Lancaster County, and we're asking that you approve of all of the wind energy regulation revisions requested by the county board. Wind energy provides enormous benefits to the surrounding community, including economic benefits, job creation, and of course, helping our environment. Wind energy can significantly help expand our tax base. In 2019, wind companies paid $12 million in state and local taxes in Nebraska. And in Iowa, they received $61 million in those taxes. In Nebraska, the Rattlesnake Creek Project in Dixon County is estimated to generate over $85 million in taxes and lease payments over the lifetime of the project. And what's more is the project created 300 construction jobs and 20 permanent positions at the site. And in fact, by the end of 2019, there were nearly three times as many jobs in Nebraska in the clean energy generation sector as the fossil fuel generation sector. So the development of clean energy could help employ more people in our community. And businesses are also looking to move to communities that support clean energy and are focusing on sustainability. So essentially shutting Lancaster County off from the ability to develop wind energy could potentially shut us off from new business opportunities. For instance, just recently, Google and Facebook have located in Nebraska because they were able to access renewable energy and bringing more essentially just bringing more businesses like these could help us attract and retain business leaders and young professionals. And by allowing wind energy development in Lancaster County, we could contend for not just those permanent jobs at the wind sites, but also those jobs at the companies like that. And then finally, clean energy is an important tool in our fight against climate change. We know that climate change is going to affect every section of the world. And in Nebraska, we're expected to see unpredictable precipitation, meaning we'll go from extreme amounts of rainfall like we saw in 2019 to extreme amounts of drought like we're seeing currently with 100% of Nebraska in a drought. Last year, there were $95 billion in damages from weather and climate disasters across the United States. That's the highest cost that the United States has ever endured. The leading cause of climate change is carbon emissions. So we need to help develop clean energy to help lower carbon emissions. Recent studies have shown that as soon as the earth goes carbon neutral, the worst effects of climate change could dissipate within 10 to 20 years. That's significant. That means that I could see the effects of climate change disappear in my lifetime. And we just need to make that a reality for future generations. But wind energy is a vital source in that fight against clean energy. Wind energy is the clean alternative to coal, and it does not release emissions, and it does not require the use of water to cool the equipment. Supporting the development of wind energy lessens our reliance on fossil fuels, helping to lower our carbon emissions. In 2019, the electricity generated from wind turbines avoided an estimated 42 million cars' worth of CO2 emissions. We have to take action on climate change. That is why the city created the Climate Action Plan, because we know that our community is going to have to be or our community is going to be severely impacted by climate catastrophes. To do our part in addressing climate change, we should ensure that Lancaster County is open to clean energy development. I and Nebraska Conservation Voters ask that you support the development of wind energy in Lancaster County. We need to do our part if we want to make our community thrive.
Thank you.
I have a quick question for you. You had stated in your, thanks for coming today, appreciate it. You stated in your testimony that you support the the four proposals coming from the the county board. Were you talking about the four proposals that I just want to make sure I'm I'm clearly understanding. The four proposals as outlined by the county board in your original letter? Or the or the two proposal then that changes that planning staff has recommended with the no change in the two other?
From the county board of commissioners, yeah.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is David Levy, L.E.V.Y. I head up the Renewable Energy Practice at the Barrett Home Law Firm in Omaha and Lincoln. We have the good fortune of representing most of the wind energy developers active in Nebraska. I urge you to recommend to the county board that they remove the three acre rule, reduce the setback to a nonparticipating residence to three and a half times turbine height, increase the maximum decibel level to at least 42 decibels day and night for a nonparticipating residence, and adopt the third party study requirement. First, the three acre rule. Land use and property rights for millennia have essentially been a first come, first served business. Limiting a property owner's property rights so his neighbor can possibly do something on her property in the future, which zoning may or may not even allow her to do, turns this fundamental concept on its head and results in an unjustified imposition on private property rights, which is inconsistent with common zoning practice. I urge you to recommend to the county board that they remove this provision. Second, the Planning Department recommends that you support the reduction of the nonparticipating setback for to three and a half times turbine height. And I support that recommendation for the same reason that you heard from Mr. Hendrickson and as in the staff report. Third, I encourage you to recommend to the county board that they change the maximum decibel level to at least 42 decibels day and night. Lancaster is the most restrictive county in Nebraska and one of the most restrictive in the Midwest in this metric. As you will hear, science does not support the current regulation. Like the three acre rule, every zoning restriction is an imposition on private property rights. The Constitution allows government to take private property rights, but only so far as health and safety justify. There is not a health and safety justification for the current noise limits. All but three Nebraska counties that regulate this are at 45 or 50 decibels or higher. And many of them have wind farms that peacefully coexist with their neighbors. There's no reports, broad reports in Nebraska, Iowa, anywhere else in the Midwest that has lots of wind farms of mass health effects. And and most of these places have higher decibel limits than Lancaster County. I think it's also important that you do now, or that I'm suggesting even, that you go to at 42 decibels. Again, most are at 45 and higher. It's also really important to remember that this is a maximum number at any receptor at any given time modeled on a worst case scenario. It's not a constant or even a common condition in practice. Monolith's recent announcement announcement of a major investment in Lancaster County is momentous. Monolith has stated that it wants 100% renewable energy to supply its facility. And NPPD has stepped up and agreed to make that happen through an RFP to private developers such as those subject to your zoning regulations. The time is now to amend those regulations in a reasonable manner to make sure the investment that supports Monolith is in Lancaster County and that Lancaster County is open for business. That Lancaster County's noise regulations in particular are overly restrictive is evidenced by the fact that since adopting those regulations, the county has not received a single special permit application for a wind project. It has effectively zoned the industry out of the county. And it sounds like maybe that's true for the chicken barns as well. These requests are reasonable ways to remedy that and find that balance which does not exist today. I urge you to act accordingly today and send these forward to the county board, and I'm happy to answer any questions. I know I'm out of time. I know you have a lot of people. I'd be happy to address the road issues that that Engineer Dingman brought up or anything else you might have, but I thank you for your time and attention.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to make sure I heard you correctly. 42 decibels day and night?
At least, yes.
Okay, and and that's that's a number that you think is workable?
You know, I think that's still low, just looking at what other counties in Nebraska and and around the Midwest do. But I also recognize that Lancaster County is populated and and that you're at 40 and 37 now.
Right.
I I would also say, and Commissioner Becky, I believe you were on the Planning Commission back in in 2015. And if I recall correctly, at that time, after all of the study and and a year of public meetings, Commissioner Corr, I think maybe you were on Commissioner Reddington, I believe, as well. The Planning Commission recommended 45 decibels, I believe, during the day and 40 at night to the county board. A day night limit, you can do that, but really look at that as the nighttime limit as being the limit. And so that's why I suggest a a constant 24 hour limit of 42 decibels measured at a 10 minute LEQ, which is the common measurement, a weighted decibels at the wall of a nonparticipating residence.
Okay, because, you know, I I agree with you. I think Lancaster County is different than other counties around Nebraska. But 42 still seems like it's pretty
Pretty restrictive.
And restrictive, so, okay. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, Greg Schwaninger, S.C.H.W.A.N.I.N.G.E.R. 2401 West Hallam Road, south edge of Lancaster County. I'm here as a landowner in that area, and I urge you to support all the recommendations from the county commissioners. Basically, I'm here for the money. I want the income from the windmills and also the tax base for the schools that the farmers get to pay the largest share right now. And there aren't many landowners here, and we've been at this since 2012, I think, and there's a lot of frustration. And nobody wants to get up and speak publicly, and I'm I'm among those. But I urge you to support those. If you stick with the sound regulations the way it is now, it eliminates anything else. So that's that's the sticky issue to me. I mean, the setbacks don't mean anything with the if it has to be a mile away. I live in a section with only my house, and I still couldn't put one mill, one windmill in that section with the regulations where they are at this time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so we will go to testimony in support that's on Zoom.
And we have John Hanson, Mary Pfeiffer, and Melissa Baker. Are the first three? So John Hanson's available?
John, is that you?
Yes.
Okay, John, you're on.
Thank you very much, and thank you for this opportunity to appear before you today. I am John Hanson. I'm the president of Nebraska Farmers Union. We're located at 1305 Plum Street here in Lincoln. We've been working in this arena for a very long time. And we are here in support of making the necessary and appropriate changes in Lancaster County's current wind development regulations that do two things. One is to protect the health and the safety of citizens, but it must also allow legal businesses that provide substantial economic and environmental benefits to operate in our county. We are not currently open for business. So as I'm going to, I know, run out of time, I want to say that I am in agreement with David Levy's remarks with one exception. And that is that as we have studied sound and we've studied setbacks and we've done the peer reviewed data, and we've looked at the experience of counties across the state, we think that the the number, the decibel number that makes the most sense is 45. If we're going to have one. I agree that the night number gets to be the the restrictive number. So if we're going to have one, I think it needs to be 45. As we looked across all of the counties in the state, by far, the most counties start at 50. So at 45, we would still be by far the most restrictive county in the state. And I also gave you supporting materials from what we had provided before in 2015. And those numbers I thought were, and those materials were still pertinent and still appropriate. And what we did in 2015 in order for us to be able to make a recommendation to you at that time was to hire what we thought was one of the best sound experts in the country with the most experience. And so we did that. And as we hired him to do that, Peter Goldberg with Tech Environmental from Waltham, Massachusetts, we said, you have free rein. Take a look at at Lancaster County. Make a recommendation, and Farmers Union will stand behind your recommendation, whatever that is. And so the the numbers that he came back with that are also a part of my materials that I provided showed that his recommendation was 45 decibels at night and 50 during the day. And also, for your benefit, Senator Ken Har worked with the county to put together maps of the county based on residences at that time in 2015 at the different decibel levels so that it kind of helps you think about how much land is actually available for a wind developer to be able to put a turbine. And so as you can see, when you look through those maps, that at 37, the county at 37 decibels, the county is virtually dark. There's just hardly any white space left at all in the county. And that it's actually at 42 decibels. It's also very, very little space. And finally, when you get to 45 decibels, you see that there are some white spots in the rural parts of the county, but even there, not that much. So I I would be more than glad to help provide any other additional information that you might require or need. But thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Any questions for John?
Okay. Next, we have Mary Pfeiffer.
Mary, are you out there?
Yes. Hello. I'm Mary Pfeiffer. I'm with a group called Guardian that works for a clean environment, sustainable future. I've been in front of this committee before to testify about our need for better rules for chicken barns. And I thank you for your good work in providing our county with much better regulations in that area. Today, I'm here to testify in support of all four proposed revisions of zoning regulations regarding wind energy. I'm a strong supporter of clean energy. My husband and I have solar panels in our home. And we have actually looked into buying a windmill for our own energy production. I've testified to the LES Board many times on the use of alternative fuels. And LES has made great progress in this area. I understand there's general agreement about revisions one and four. So let me speak briefly to two and three. I recommend that we revise the requirement for the arbitrary three acre setback. It's not a standard used anywhere else in the country. And this revision will allow us the possibility of wind energy in our county. I also support the revision for the sound setback for decibels. Many researchers have found that there is no relationship between noise at this hot level and harmful health. I suggest that this question of revisions be embedded in the larger context of the environmental health of our planet. The real question of the environmental health of our planet. The real question with wind energy is compared to what? What is the vague and unlikely threat of wind turbines compared to the cold that contribute to asthma and the very real harm caused by oil spills, air pollution, and increased carbon in our atmosphere? Looking at the big picture of health in our country, wind energy is a great boon to the physical well-being of Americans. Also, without wind, our state is on a collision course with climate catastrophe. Our weather will grow hotter and affect crop yields, and it will affect crop yields and quality of life. We will be more vulnerable to fireouts and floods. I suggest these revisions be made because my priority is averting global climate change and giving our children and grandchildren a livable environment. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. We have Melissa Baker up next. Melissa?
Hi there. Can everybody hear me okay? My, not on, but my audio is working. So, okay, hi, everybody. Thank you very much. Going after Mary Pfeiffer, oh geez, what do I say? I just completely echo her comments. But Melissa Baker, B-A-K-E-R, I live at 7125 Yosemite Drive here in Lincoln, Nebraska. But again, I echo her comments, and I thank her for what she had to say, and Amanda, and John Hanson as well. So I'm here in support of wind energy. You know, this is an extremely important conversation, so I thank you for having it. And now is the time to act on it, too. We need to act on this today and, you know, support LES's goals and the city's goals, the Climate Action Plan, and as Mary had said, which, again, going after his heart because it can always bring me to tears, but this is extremely important that we start acting now. Wind is going to be there, and are we going to utilize it is the question. The resource is there. We have the ability and the technology to do it, and we can do it in a smart way. We can do it in a way that is both beneficial and helpful. So really, I appreciate the gentleman who spoke, I don't know him, but the local farmer, and this is about the green, both in terms of economy and the opportunities, the possibilities with that growth and attracting that kind of growth, as well as environmentally. And I speak from the heart environmentally because I came before you, too, with the CAFO conversations that we had, and I thank you for the work that you did in that and the leadership that a lot of these people today here provided with that. Because wind energy and CAFO conversations are very different, especially in terms of where I come from, when I'm worried about water conservation and water quality for our future and for our future generations. So these are both very important conversations to be had and important work to do. But there is a place for both, you know, agriculture and development as well as wind and energy and development there. So I think we need to support this, get behind LES and many other people that are looking for making progress in the right direction with this. So I thank you for your time today. I don't foresee Lancaster County turning into the next Green Belt Express like what we see is happening in Kansas, but I think we can work smart and together and do the right thing and act now on these issues. So, thank you.
Okay. I show that we have Josh next.
That's correct. Moenin?
Yes.
Yes, can you hear me okay?
We can.
Very good. Thank you for your time. My name is Josh Moenin, last name M-O-E-N-N-I-N-G. My address is 1202 West Norfolk Avenue, Norfolk, Nebraska. And I recognize you have a lot of testifiers before you today, so I will try to be brief. I am the director of a group called New Power Nebraska, which is an advocacy organization for clean energy development across the state. I also am mayor of the city of Norfolk, and so I come at this issue with a couple of different perspectives and just wanted to shine a light on those in terms of clean energy generation's impact in our area of the state, recognizing that all of our counties are different and Lancaster County may be very different from counties in northeast Nebraska. But I think there's some similarities here in terms of clean energies' potential as a climate solution in our state and a market opportunity for all areas of Nebraska. We've seen the benefits in northeast Nebraska in terms of new jobs, new farm income, new tax revenue. All those things have been touched upon here already. Business investment opportunity with clean energy, we're seeing it drive wind energy development in Nebraska in terms of the marketplace demanding a resource that we have in abundance in Nebraska. Nebraska, the third highest state in wind energy potential in the country. So you're seeing not only Facebooks and AT&amp;Ts and Googles of the world wanting Nebraska wind, but also companies like Hormel and Smuckers, and now Monolith in your backyard, signing an agreement with NPPD, committing to renewable energy and wanting that renewable energy to come from local places. And so Lancaster County, your situation, as has been stated through the regulations that have been adopted, has essentially shut the door on any wind energy development in the county effectively. And I've seen how that plays out in other counties in the state, having placed restrictions that are so onerous that development is made impossible. The investment simply flows to other counties that have been more reasonable about adopting regulations. As an example, my home county, Madison County, planning commissioners, county commissioners took the time to visit area wind farms, herd, and see for themselves how the industry works, were able to come to a set of regulations that I think both respected neighbors' concerns but also allowed for responsible development. And that is also respecting the property rights of folks like you just heard from in Lancaster County, a landowner who wants to utilize this opportunity on his land to generate new income. And so I think the county board has prudently taken the time to say, "Let's take stock of what we've done here, revisit some of these regulations, find the right balance to allow for development to happen," while we also respect neighbors' concerns about noise. I know in a number of other counties that the noise matter has been addressed through setbacks, and as we've heard already, by adopting the decimal level you're at now, Lancaster is by and far the most restrictive in the state. So I would encourage you to accept the county board's recommendations and move forward with allowing for clean energy development in Lancaster County.
I have Cecil Stewart next. Cecil? I'm going to list off the next couple that I have. I have Marilyn McNabb, Ken Har, and Matt Hanson. Cecil, are you out there? If not, Marilyn, are you ready to go?
Cecil is on.
Okay, thank you. Hi Cecil, can you hear us?
Cecil, you'll need to unmute.
Hi Cecil, we still can't hear you. Is Marilyn ready to go?
Marilyn, you'll need to unmute.
Hi Marilyn, I can see, but I cannot hear you.
Marilyn, can you unmute?
Or Matt Hanson, are either one of those available?
Ken, are you able to unmute?
Hi, who's there?
Hi, this is Matt Hanson. Great, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm State Senator Matt Hanson, and I represent Legislative District 26 in northeast Lincoln. For the record, that's M-A-T-T-H-A-N-S-E-N. I'm representing myself here today, but I will note that I signed onto a letter drafted by Senator Wishert along with several other Lincoln-area senators that was delivered to the commission sharing some of these points. I support updating the regulations on wind energy generation in Lancaster County and including reducing the setback, increasing the maximum decimal limit to something more in line with other counties in Nebraska. Serving on the state level, I've recognized that Lancaster County, my county, has seemed to have fallen behind nearby counties in terms of interest and development of wind energy. This appears to me to be a key loss to our county since wind represents an economically beneficial commodity and provides a great opportunity for Lancaster County and Lancaster County residents. As you know, it has been desired of us at the state level to reduce property tax burdens, and I believe bringing in significant new revenue with wind energy development is one of the best and most sustainable ways to do just that. Another focus recently has been to examine unneeded and outdated regulations. I urge you to keep this in mind and not to single out wind energy for greater regulation than other economic development. Please make sure we do not over-regulate this economic development opportunity out of our county. Wind energy generation also provides significant opportunities for cleaner air, cleaner water, and cleaner soil, in contrast with fossil fuel generation, which we have right here in Lancaster County, which uses significant amounts of water and emits carcinogens and pollutants into our air. I believe clean energy generation is in the future, and we should embrace it in Lancaster County through reasonable regulation. Again, I urge you to update the existing regulations to allow reasonable, responsible wind energy development in Lancaster County. Thank you.
Continue on our list with Mary Harding and the rest, and we will go back to Cecil, Marilyn, and Ken if they are available after we go through everyone else.
Okay. Mary Harding, are you there?
Yes, hello.
Hi, Mary.
Hi. Lot of technology today, huh?
Yes.
Chair Cor and members of the commission, my name is Mary Harding. That's H-A-R-D-I-N-G. I live at 1107 Happy Hollow Court in Plattsmouth, Nebraska. I also represent subdivision one of Nebraska Public Power District Board, which includes all of rural Lancaster County. This year, I serve as chair of the board, but I want to emphasize the opinions I expressed today are mine alone and do not necessarily reflect the positions of the board or the district. I'm also a member of the City of Plattsmouth Planning Council, so I do understand a little bit of what you're going through today. I appear today in support of text amendment 200008 to Article 13.048. More than four decades ago, Nebraska Public Power District took a bold step forward to power Nebraska by constructing Gerald Gentleman Station, which is coal-fired, and Cooper Nuclear Station. Those decisions were very controversial, and both plants were larger than was needed at that time. However, those decisions are what has provided Nebraskans with the region's lowest-cost power for decades. Today, I want to point out, I think we have a similar opportunity. Electric generation across the state and the nation has shifted from fossil fuels toward clean energy. Coal companies are announcing record bankruptcies and mine closings, while solar and wind companies have been growing with strong growth in 2020 even through the pandemic, and this growth is driven by market demand. As the representative of Lancaster County for eighteen years to the NPPD Board, I've had ample opportunity to hear from our residents as well as to see the economic advantages of developing wind. One only has to take the 144th Street exit south off of I-80 in west Omaha to see the hive of construction and economic activity created by OPPD's willingness to serve multinational companies with the energy they prefer. These are jobs that would not come to Nebraskans without the commitment to provide renewable energy to our local systems. Here in Lancaster County, Monolith Materials is building a facility which will require approximately 2 million megawatt-hours of annual energy. The company, which has already added more than seventy good-paying jobs here in the county, has entered into a memorandum of understanding with NPPD to provide that this power be 100% renewable electricity and preferably developed locally. Currently, Lancaster County has regulations in place that prevent the development of wind energy. These regulations are not based in science and prohibit county residents from receiving benefits of wind energy, which are good-paying jobs, significant property tax revenues, and clean air. I hesitate to mention, but I have to, you know, every policy decision involves trade-offs, and this is no different. Right now, in Lancaster County, the biggest source of air pollution comes from NPPD through our generation of energy at Sheldon Station. So this question before you really creates the question, what is the health risk of asthma and emphysema and lung disease in the county compared to potential health risks based on annoyance and visual disturbances from wind turbines in the county? I'm getting some feedback here, so I hope this is still working. Terrific. I encourage the planning commission to carefully consider the advantages to Lancaster County and its citizens that careful and thoughtful wind development resources could provide. Please recommend all four provisions of text amendment 200008 to the Lancaster County Board for approval. Thank you very much. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so Cecil Stewart, are you available?
We also have Chris Olson, Al Davis, and Zach Renshaw that we were going to try to get to and then go back to them.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And Chris Olson will be available only by phone.
Okay.
Good afternoon, planning commissioners. Can you hear me? It's Dr. Christopher Olson on the line. Yes, so it's Christopher Olson, spelled O-L-L-S-O-N, and I'm actually in Ancaster, Ontario, coming to you from Canada today. All right. Thank you, commissioners. I hold a PhD in environmental health and have been practicing for over twenty years. For the past ten years, I've been researching wind turbine health issues and published numerous scientific articles in this field. On January 6, I submitted a fifty-page report to the Health Department entitled "Health Impact Assessment: Sound and Setback Citing Guidelines for Wind Energy Projects." I would be lying to you if I said there was a magical sound level or setback distance that would make everybody happy. However, these decisions should be based However, these decisions should be based on the weight of scientific evidence that ensures the protection of public health and welfare, while still allowing for responsible wind energy development. Most Nebraska counties, as you have heard, have a 50-decibel sound standard to protect their residents. Equally, North Dakota, South Dakota, Illinois, Wisconsin, and Minnesota have state-level standards that make things a lot easier for their local counties. The most common sound limit at the exterior of homes is 45 decibels, and it's uniform across day and nighttime hours. None of them have a lower sound standard than 45 decibels. Over the past 15 years, there's been extensive medical and scientific research evaluating public health and welfare concerns of those living in proximated wind turbines. The majority of this research was published after 2015, when the existing Lancaster County standard was put in place. The term annoyance has been used for decades in the research of all sound sources, and is not unique in turbines. On the balance, the scientific research on people's self-reported annoyance towards wind energy projects reveals that, one, annoyance is not a medical condition, and it's not recognized as a medical disease by the American Medical Association. The self-reported annoyance is only very weakly correlated to the sound level people experience at the exterior of their homes. In fact, annoyance is much more strongly related to the subjective factors of people's attitude and the visual impact of turbines on the landscape. And since 2015, the science has shown that the levels of annoyance that people report do not, in fact, lead to stress-mediated health outcomes. In a recent US study, wind turbine annoyance and related stress effects were reported to be not a widespread problem. So what we know now that we didn't know in 2015 is that we do not have to set low annoyance levels to protect public health in those living around wind turbines. Most of the public health research, as I said, was actually published after 2015. These are the large medical and epidemiological studies that have been conducted around the world. And what we see from these studies is that those reporting annoyance do not report health effects up to 45 decibels. Wind turbine sound levels do not impact sleep. Health studies have not shown any increased medical conditions at levels of up to 45 decibels for non-participating homes. And it's not associated with restricted quality of life, anxiety, or depression. Wind energy projects allowed for continued use and enjoyment of rural areas at the 45-decibel sound limit. I have visited Lancaster County several times over the years. I understand that parts of the rural areas of the county are more densely populated in comparison to other Nebraska counties. However, protective sound and setback standards should not be based on population density. Standards should protect everyone, regardless if there is one home or hundreds of homes in the project area. This is a very strange planning argument. It suggests that it would be acceptable to harm people in the less dense counties in Nebraska that have higher sound standards. Although rural Lancaster may be more populated than other areas in Nebraska, it is certainly not too densely populated to host an appropriately-sited wind project. There are operating wind projects with thousands of wind turbines throughout Minnesota, Wisconsin, Indiana, Illinois, and Michigan that have far more homes in a project area than would be the case for some areas in Lancaster County. These projects have been operating for years without issue, and have permitted sound standards of 45 to 50 decibels. In no way are feeding lots the same as wind turbines. And as Mr. Hendrickson just indicated, that the one-mile setback distance for a feeding lot has zoned them out of the county. I've worked on over 50 wind projects across the United States. The existing Lancaster County 37-decibel nighttime sound limit, and de facto one-mile setback, effectively zones out wind in the county. One could not build a wind project using the standard, even in the most sparsely populated rural counties in the US. I'm not aware of any jurisdiction, but as a 37-decibel sound standard, I'm not aware of any US jurisdiction that has a 37-decibel sound standard where there is an operating wind project. More importantly, the standard does not afford any more protection for health, community well-being, or enjoyment of the property than a standard of 45 decibels. I would urge the Planning Commission to recommend a uniform day-night sound standard of 45 decibels, and a setback of three-and-a-half times turbine tip height to the county board. These standards have a long history of working across the Midwest, in areas that are similar to Lancaster County. 15 years of medical and scientific research has shown that a 45-decibel standard that protects the health and welfare of the community, while still allows for the proper study of wind energy projects. Thank you very much, Commissioners, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Stated in your testimony, a number of different states that had set their state-level limits at 45 decibels. Could you read to me again those states that you mentioned? I didn't catch it the first time around, I'm sorry.
Yes, certainly. So two states that have recently revised their standards, they used to be at 50 decibels, and undergone extensive revision. Some examples of those are North Dakota and South Dakota. So any project now being built in North Dakota or South Dakota has to meet a 45-decibel limit. Illinois has a limit of 47 decibels. Wisconsin has a limit of 45 decibels. And in fact, Minnesota has a sound standard of 50 decibels at the exterior of homes.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Olson, Dr. Olson? Okay, thank you for the information.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, I have Al Davis up next.
Good afternoon, can you hear me?
We sure can.
Okay. My name is Al Davis, I live at 7200 Southwest 27th Street in Lincoln, Nebraska. And I'm testifying here today as the registered lobbyist for the Nebraska Sierra Club. The Nebraska chapter of the Sierra Club has over 3,000 members, many of whom live in Lancaster County, who are focused on protecting and preserving the environment across the state of Nebraska. At the same time, the club recognizes that sustainable development must continue across our nation. There is often a fine line between what is good for the environment and what is good for humankind, but sometimes they do intersect. Climate change is a fact of life, and the root causes of climate change are no longer in dispute. The continued pumping of carbon dioxide and other gases into the atmosphere for the past few centuries is contributing to a long, slow increase in temperatures on the earth. Scientists who have studied the issue are concerned that we will soon reach a point where global warming cannot be slowed or stopped, which will bring massive decations, economic decline, extinction, and death for plants and animals, but also for mankind. It's important at this point to recognize that some people think that if we do nothing about that, Lancaster County will be as warm as South Texas in 40 years. Fortunately, the nation is finally implementing new electrical generation via renewable resources, which will slow the rising temperatures, and we have seen our own public power entities respond to these issues. Solar panels and wind turbines make a difference, but they need to be installed in a manner which generates the maximum benefit for minimal damage. Which brings us to the reason for this hearing today, as you consider modifying setbacks and sound limits for turbines. The Nebraska chapter of the Sierra Club believes that renewable energy must be promoted and encouraged across the nation, but that sensible rules and regulations must be put in place to protect the more pristine natural portions of our country. It is the opinion of the club that the existing regulations in Lancaster County are unreasonable, and are placing significant barriers to development in an industry which will drive the nation towards zero-carbon emissions. Lancaster County's regulations are some of the most restrictive in the nation. The existing decibel level restriction at 37 decibels overnight is quieter than any office in the county, quieter than the fans in your furnace or AC, and quieter than rural homes within five miles of the interstate or a major street where the constant hum of traffic is non-stop. Imposing draconian restrictions on our industry, on an industry when even nature produces more noise, effectively kills the development, and it's been a straw man argument to kill the industry by those who simply don't like the look of turbines. Lancaster County should adopt decibel restrictions which mirror those in other parts of the nation, and that is at or near 50 decibels. I have been to several wind farms myself, and can vouch for the fact that they are largely silent. The Sierra Club supports the modification, also supports the modification in height restrictions proposed in elimination of the three-acre carve-out, which is a very unusual barrier to development when a project can be stopped for a possible homesite which may never come to fruition. It is important to state that construction of wind turbines is a legal business, which has the potential to provide several good jobs, to contribute income to our hard-pressed farmers, and provide needed property taxes to Lancaster County, which has, for example, scores of bridges which remain closed or in disrepair due to lack of funds, as Engineer Dickman pointed out earlier today. But the industry cannot locate in this county today because existing regulations are simply too restrictive. Lancaster County is also a trendsetter in Nebraska, so the actions you adopt will be far-reaching. The regulations you adopt will mirrored in other counties across Nebraska and the Midwest. Nebraska's public power entities have made it clear that they are headed towards a net-zero emission standard. They can achieve that by buying power from within the state of Nebraska, where the benefits of income, jobs, and tax relief are sorely needed, or from wind and solar farms located outside the state. But those benefits aren't going to accrue to Nebraska if they are forced to take the latter step. Zoning an industry out of existence is simply bad economic policy, especially an industry which is contributing to preservation of the planet. We urge you to revoke existing regulations and adopt a more industry-friendly plan, and I'm glad to take any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so next we have Zach Renshaw. Hi Zach, are you there?
Zach, you'll need to unmute.
All right, can you hear me? I'm on the phone.
Yes.
Okay, fantastic. Hello, everyone, my name is Zach Renshaw, R-E-N-S-H-A-W. I am currently residing at 4630 Leighton Avenue, Lincoln, Nebraska. I come today to speak as a proponent of these, all four proposed amendments to the wind regulations in Lancaster County, specifically as a young person. Right now, as I look out into the future, we see a panacea of global crises all converging in one. We're facing a 100-year pandemic, the threats of climate change are ever real, and currently, right now, we are facing a horrible economic recession. And all these three things speak to me, that there is a solution, that we can attack all these problems at once. Number one, attacking the economic recession, the wind turbine service technicians are projected to be the second fastest-growing job in the nation, right behind solar PV installers, paying about an average of $28 an hour. Changing these amendments and supporting these amendments will allow us to attack this economic problem by developing good, green jobs in Lancaster County. Not only that, but however, combining wind with other renewables in the state will allow for a flexible, smart grid design that can help reach climate goals to prevent this ecological collapse that we are currently facing. And finally, I saw this in the Lincoln Journal Star, someone mentioned in an op-ed about the negative impacts of wind, and I specifically want to talk about this. They mentioned the impact on birds and aviation. But if we actually compare, studies have shown that if you compare the impacts of traditional fossil-fuel-based energy sources, they actually kill more animals and more wildlife than solar and wind combined. So there are tremendous benefits that can come from passing these amendments on to the county commission. I believe that this is a solution that is overdue, and I believe that this is a great way for Lancaster County to begin to attack these problems that, as a young person, I will have to face head-on. So I urge you to support all four of the amendments, to build a green future for the young people in Nebraska. Thank you.
If we can go back and try Cecil Stewart, followed by Ken Har, and then last Marilyn McNabb.
Okay, can you hear me now? Yes. Hi. Sorry for the technology, go ahead, sure. Well, spelling of the last name is S-T-E-W-A-R-D, 127 North 11th, apartment number one. I have four brief comments, and let me say, first, I'm in support of the four text amendments. First of all, reference to LES and our public power system. As most of you know, LES has taken a very courageous step and set a plan in motion to have zero net fossil fuel and zero carbon impact by 2040. We have a responsibility, as citizens and as governing bodies, to align with these principles. We're very fortunate to live in a public power state. They do get their power from wind sources from outside the state, some of it. However, the more that we have locally that contributes to the power pool, the less cost will be occurring for the consumers. Secondly, I would like to remind folks that Lincoln and Lancaster County are in the midst of a very dynamic and heated era of planning. The Lincoln Climate Action Plan has tremendous expectations for clean energy, and hopefully, that will find its way into the comprehensive plan. And a third comment is that farmers and property owners deserve the right to farm energy. In the states where this has occurred in the past, it's an economic boom, not only to the construction of the system, but also in reference to leases and continuing income. My last comment is a reminder that this is evolving technology. Information that I've reviewed from one of the major manufacturers of wind systems, General Electric, claims that the sound has reduced, the sound production has reduced over time in manufacturing. And that is, it is down now to around 30 to 40 decibels, and a limit of 45 would be much more in order, and would help the development a great deal. So I thank you. And by the way, I'm a former member of your august body, and I congratulate you on your public service. Thank you.
Any questions for Cecil? Okay, Marilyn McNabb. Marilyn's still on the call? I think she said.
Marilyn, you need to unmute.
Or do we have Ken Har?
Yes, I'm here.
Hi, Ken.
Hello. I'm Ken Har, a former city council member and a former member of the Nebraska Legislature. Worked for a long time on wind energy. I live at 1808 Folkways Boulevard in Lincoln. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to testify, and I also want to thank you for your public service on the Planning Commission. I have a feeling of how much time you have to spend. Well, I'm going to start with a story. Right before New Year, I had some chest pains, and at my doctor's advice, I went to the emergency room, and they found nothing unusual. And then, on Friday of that same week, after being at the hospital, my wife, Chris, and I decided to get tested for COVID-19, just for peace of mind. After all, I'm 77 and have heart issues, and had just been at the hospital. So on the following Monday evening, we got our test results back. Chris tested negative, and I opened my email, and to my terror, I tested positive. And we panicked. What finally happened is we wound up staying away from each other at opposite ends of the house for 10 days. And Chris left my meals for me on a table in front of my office room, where I had a bed, a bathroom, and a computer. But I've had no symptoms. And since then, Chris has tested negative three times. So we are waiting anxiously for the vaccine, for the vaccine to make her more safe. But I want to tell you, there is no vaccine for climate change. Today, I'd like to talk to you about climate change in relation to what you're doing. Science tells us that the climate is warming, and that human activity is the main driver. And as citizens of this planet, we are all in this climate crisis together. And just as we are all part of the problem, we all have a responsibility to be a part of the solution. of the solution. The continued combustion of fossil fuels accelerates the impacts of climate change, which in turn threatens the health and safety of us all. And in fact, the Center for Disease Control describes the health effects of climate change, quote, "to include respiratory and cardiovascular disease, injuries, and premature deaths related to extreme weather events, changes in the prevalence and geographical distribution of food, and waterborne illness and other infectious diseases, and threatens mental health," end quote. And poll after poll has showed the majority of the population are not only concerned about climate change, but also favor a transition to renewable energy or clean energy. Now, there's no simple transition to clean energy, but Catherine Hayhoe, an atmospheric scientist and professor of political science at Texas Tech University, says, quote, "There are no silver bullets to resolve climate change, only silver buckshot," end quote. Developing wind energy is one of the important silver buckshot. It not only are common obligation to flatten the climate change curve, but there's also the cascade of benefits in developing renewable energy, which include better health, local property tax revenue, land rental to farmers, and good-paying jobs. So in conclusion, as I said when I started, there's no vaccine for climate change. What will make the difference is our actions or our inaction. And know this, climate change will be the elephant in the room from now on on every kind of government planning, especially what you're doing. What used to be normal is not normal anymore, or, as Yogi Berra probably said it best, "The future ain't what it used to be." The climate crisis is not someone else's problem to solve. We're all in this together. We're all part of the problem, and we all share responsibility for the solution. It is time for wind regulations that both protect people and their property, but also allow for a safe and reasonable path forward to a clean-energy future. It's time to revisit the 2017 no-wind regulations, and I want to thank you for your time.
Okay.
The last person we're not able to get a hold of, so we'd like to move on to the, we have one party here in person for neutral.
Okay.
And then I'm going to call the, we're going to start with the opposing, those in opposition. The next three speakers following Emily will be Larry Behrens, Jack Thompson, and Larry Alder.
Okay, go ahead.
My name's Emily Haxby. My last name is spelled H-A-X-B-Y. I live at 8867 Southwest 86th Road in Claytonia. I know you're in for a long haul today, so I'll try to make this quick and concise. I'm speaking today neither in support or opposed, as I do not live in Lancaster County, but I am a Gage County resident. As we are next-door neighbors, we at least have some impacts on each other, unlike those from out-of-state from big wind companies. They are supposed to meet regulations that protect the residents of your county and not change the regulations to fit the company. I read through the Health Department's report, and I'd just like to read a couple statements. Any proposed change to the noise standard should be made available to the public in advance of public hearings for review and discussion. Previous efforts related to wind turbines include significant public information efforts. Due to the challenges of the pandemic and the deadline to hold a public hearing, there hasn't been adequate time for a similar process, public information process. So what's the hurry? Why isn't there a push to inform the public to give them time to get their information and give their opinion? The Comprehensive Plan states that the City of Lincoln and Lancaster County have long encouraged the public to participate in local government activities. Keeping people knowledgeable about and involved in the Comprehensive Plan's implementation is crucial into ensuring its ultimate success. A key to securing community interest in planning process is early involvement. An emphasis should be placed on providing ample upfront participation. And then, so what is the rush? And you know, as Levy, Mr. Levy did say, he said, "First come, first served." Well, the people are there first, so their safety should be first when looking at these regulations. Last night into this morning, I did take time to look through the letters of opposition and support. I counted over 150 letters in opposition of changes, mostly from those that would be directly affected by these changes. There were almost 60 letters in support. Of those, 40 was a template submission with almost all of those addresses inside the city limits. Some were not even Lancaster County. I found that six letters, there were six letters that would be directly affected by those regulation changes, and some of them were also template submissions. If Lincoln is eager to bring wind in without the care for the safety of those around them, there's plenty of park space within city limits. Lancaster can get its power through SPP, which utilizes wind energy that is already placed in less-populated areas. The current regulations are not stopping wind projects. They might make it difficult, but they have the option to sign up residents and participate in the project, which would allow higher noise levels. If the residents decline to participate, then they should be protected with the current noise regulations. Any company that wants to utilize an area for development needs to work with the people that live in that community. Talk to the people. If this is what they want, then they can become financially involved in their participants. All they need to do is go out there and talk to them. Again, the regulations are put in place to protect the health, safety, and welfare of all the residences. They are not meant to accommodate big corporations that can jeopardize their safety. I'd like to make one comment. Mr. Hanson said he was here with Nebraska Farmers Union, and I am a fifth-generation farmer down in Gage County. And one of their statements that what they stand for is to protect and enhance the economic well-being and quality of life of family farmers, ranchers, and their rural committees, communities. When he was urging to change it to 45, because that leaves space for wind, that's not protecting the people, that's giving an option for outside companies to come in. The people need to be first.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for me?
Come on.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we will support, we will start testimony and opposition.
Larry Behrens.
Oh, oh, sorry. Do I have a zoomer that's neutral?
This would be people that have actually signed in.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Larry Behrens, Jack Thompson, and Larry Alder, in that order, please. And the next three would be Joe Jean, or, yeah, Joe Jean, Alder, David Bargen, and Scott Grope.
Joe Jean's not speaking. She just signed up.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Larry Alder, 2498 West Ash Road, Cortland, Nebraska. Alder, A-L-L-D-E-R. Just kind of a little timeline, we've involved in this for a long time, so this is nothing new. I'm sure you, most of you guys have been through this. When our text amendment, number 18016, for one-mile setback, went before the Lancaster County Commissioners.
Not here.
They asked the wind developer if this one mile would kill wind development in Lancaster County. At that time, the developer and the representation said it would take away flexibility, but they cannot say one way or the other whether it would kill a project in Lancaster County. They also said that it takes a lot of participation from the community and a lot of people to buy into any project to make one go forward. Even with that, being said, the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners amended our text amendment to five turbine heights or one-half a mile in order to find a balance so that wind energy could more easily be developed in Lancaster County. And now, we're back here again. Evidently, the developers have not been able to find enough people that are willing to buy in and participate in the project under the current regulations. So they're now asking Lancaster County to reduce the setback and raise the sound levels even more. By making these changes to the setbacks, they can move forward without, with a project, without the support and participation from the people that will have to live near the wind development. If it don't fit, don't force it. By relaxing the setbacks, this is what you're doing. If wind energy cannot be developed under our current regulations, then it doesn't fit in Lancaster County. We can get our renewable energy from anywhere in the country. It doesn't have to be from populated areas, where it will negatively affect the quality of life of the people that have to live there. I feel if we want renewable energy to go forward in this country, we should find places where it fits, and the people that will be living near these wind projects support it. Noise is not the only noise caused by wind turbines. We need distance in our regulations to keep wind turbines from being built in populated areas. Lancaster County does not need to relax the regulations. If changes are already made, they need to go back to the one-mile setback to protect the health, property values, and the quality of life for the people that live around these wind turbines. So, yeah.
Thank you for coming forward.
Is Jack Thompson here?
Good afternoon. My name is Jack Thompson. I live at 2300 West Sprague Road, Martel. I built a house down there about 11 years ago, and I'm located between the Village of Sprague and the beautiful Blue Stem Lake State Park. Essentially, I have one request to make and two comments. My, a request that the Planning Commission recommend to the county commissioners that the delay acting on this text amendment proposal until the county COVID health directives have been significantly relaxed so that all the parties can sufficiently and safely research, meet, and discuss all of the aspects of this issue, especially the proposed text change to reduce turbine setbacks. I just became aware of this about a week and a half ago, so we're all kind of scrambling to get up to speed. And I wish I could come with more supportive data, but I've not had time to do that yet. Comment one, I do support the Comprehensive Plan calling for promoting appropriate renewable fuel sources in the county. Wind is certainly one of those sources, but not the only one. My house is heated and cooled with an extremely efficient geothermal system. I have converted 75% of my lighting systems to LED. I do own, it has some farm ground, so we farm with no-till methods, and we are starting to plant cover crops. And I have planted easily over 500 trees on my property. My point in mentioning this is that these admittedly small green steps I've taken have no detrimental effect on my neighbors. No noise, no shadow flicker, no bird fatalities, no falling land values, and particularly no disastrous visual impacts. We can achieve our Comprehensive Plan goals with much less intrusive projects instead of a handful of huge wind farms. Maybe we should take a serious look at solar-generated electrical power. There are some challenges with large-scale solar generation, but new technologies are overcoming these challenges, and it comes without any of the health, visual, and financial issues of wind. My second comment is I would ask if any of the planning commissioners and Health Department staff have visited up close and in person an existing wind farm of the type being proposed here today. If they haven't, then I would ask them to please make the short trip down to the Milligan One Nextera Wind Farm in Celine County. As I discovered, seeing a wind farm from a distance of three, seven, or 10 miles away is not sufficient to get a true sense of the look and feel of these projects. You need to see these 50-story-tall, alien-looking structures from a half-mile distance or so to understand that setback distance absolutely matters, and these 500-foot-tall turbines are much more than simply a visual nuisance. They are, in my opinion, essentially a 30-year-long death sentence for all non-participating residents. Thank you for your time, and are there any questions?
I think we're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I have David Bargen, Scott Grope, and Richard Holman.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Hi.
My name is David Bargen. Last name is B-A-R-G-E-N. I'm a partner with Rembold Lutowski Law firm here in Lincoln, 1128 Lincoln Mall. My practice area primarily is in governmental law. I today represent several Lancaster County landowners organized as the group Lancaster Wind Watch, who oppose the text amendments before you today. And I want to step back from a few things that have been said here today first and address the timing of this proposed amendment process. Before you are four amendments to section 13.048 regarding special permits for industrial wind towers, proposed by the county board. These amendments touch on the same issues of setbacks, impacts, and noise concerns that were extensively reviewed by this commission, the county board, and the public in 2015, and most recently in 2018 through 2019. As your own staff report says on these text amendments, the process followed in those previous efforts took several months and allowed for input and review by the public prior to this commission recommending any changes. As the staff report notes, in 2015, a working group was formed, six public meetings were held over a three-month period, and draft text was presented for a public hearing at this Planning Commission some six months after that process began. In all, that process took over nine months. Yet today, you are asked to recommend undoing or altering much of that hard work in a timeframe that to date spans only a little over 60 days from the initial request from the county board. The notice for this public hearing today is dated 16 days ago. This all begs the question, what's the rush this time around? As the staff report indicates, COVID has made it impossible for the Health Department to research proposed changes to the noise standards. My clients have barely had noticed that these changes were being proposed, and the larger county population has had little to no awareness. This rushed process taking place as it is during a pandemic and begun right at the start of the holiday season does not comport with the 2040 Comprehensive Plan that, quote, "encourages the public to participate in local government activities," end quote. Government is charged with placing accountability and transparency to its constituents above expedience for the benefit of business interests. This is exactly the wrong way to approach these proposed changes. Because this process is moving entirely too fast and virtually under the radar, depriving my clients and other constituents the opportunity to adequately be part of this process, I ask this commission to postpone action on all of these amendments until another working group can be formed, public meetings can occur, and public participation can actually happen. I also echo the staff report recommendation that the noise standards remain unchanged until the Health Department can review them after pandemic conditions have improved and the vaccination process is complete. But if this commission is determined to proceed, let me address the proposed amendments. The first proposed amendment would reduce the setback for turbines from top five times turbine height to three-and-a-half times turbine height to a dwelling unit. The staff report recommends approval of this because it claims that this setback is not about health. But even if that were true, nowhere do state zoning statutes or the county zoning code itself state that they exist only to protect public health. Nebraska law statute 23-114.03 provides the county zoning regulations shall, quote, "be designed for the purpose of promoting the health, safety, morals, convenience, order, prosperity, and welfare of the present and future inhabitants of Nebraska, including, among other things, such specific purposes as subsection 1, developing both urban and non-urban areas; subsection 9, protecting the tax base; subsection 10, protecting the property against blight and depreciation; subsection 13, encouraging the most appropriate use of land in the county." The current setback of five times turbine height, while not eliminating impacts to neighboring properties, goes further to help minimize visual and nuisance impacts, which will help accomplish these statutory directives. We ask this commission not recommend a reduction in the setback. The second proposed amendment would eliminate protections allowing lots to have at least three acres outside of setback and noise-impact areas. Not requiring setbacks be measured from property lines already allows for trespass zoning. But preserving at least three acres of non-participants' land provides at least some protection. Again, this regulation protects not just health, but also protects property values and thereby the tax base. We ask this commission to adopt the staff recommendation and not recommend a change in this provision. The third proposed amendment would reduce protections for tower noise. The staff recommendation- The staff recommendation clearly outlines the inability for the Health Department to research any changes to information previously considered for noise standards and that its most recent review of studies continues to validate the current limits of 37 decibels by night and 40 decibels by day for non-participating properties. We ask this commission to adopt the staff recommendation and not recommend a change in noise provisions. In conclusion, we ask this commission to first and foremost postpone action on all of these proposed amendments. May I finish just two more points? Alternatively, we ask this commission to reject the three proposed amendments I discussed dealing with setbacks and noise reductions, and I ask that all the materials submitted by opponents of these proposed amendments be made part of the record of this proceeding. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have Scott Grob, Richard Holman, and Mike Brown.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Scott Grob. I'm an attorney. I have offices in Wilbur and in Fairbury, but I'm a resident of Lancaster County, and I live with my wife and two daughters at 11605 Southwest 72nd Street. I'm here today in opposition of any changes. I support Mr. Bargen's position of delaying this, but I think what I want you to know is I pay attention to a lot of things that happen around me, and I only found out about this a week ago. Part of my practice is that I represent a number of municipalities, so I have been with planning commissions. I have heard the, well, we didn't know anything about it. This was rammed through after it's been, you know, published for months and months. So I'm sympathetic with your position. Me not knowing it, what was going on here, I jumped in and started doing some research. And I'm not a member of any group. I'm simply a resident that has a law practice with some municipal law history. So the first thing I did was went into anything that was available to the public. I looked at all of the support letters, and I know as engaged commissioners, you probably read through those as much as you could. I did one further, and I mapped most all of those that were available as of Monday, and there wasn't a single one that came from south of West Denton Road, and there wasn't a single one that came from west of Highway 77. Most everything was in the city limits of Lincoln. So I decided to do a little more looking at that, and one thing that struck me about how this came about, and I think this was addressed earlier, was that usually you have someone with a proposal that comes and says, this is what we want to do, and in order for us to do that, we need to tweak a few things, and we're asking for your permission and the public's permission. Here, you've had all of those over the past couple of years, but now what we're looking at is a letter from on high saying, revisit this, make some changes, let's go forward. So it makes it difficult because you have a county who's diverse, very diverse, and it would make me feel much better if you had something we could pinpoint as to why we want to make these changes. So where's the bug in someone's ear that said, if we would put a wind farm over here, we need to change these rules? But you want to change something that's completely county-wide right now without knowing why? We know there's people that are interested, but what's their holdup? What do they really want the county to change? And when you talk about making one change at a time, it's somewhat disingenuous because after you make a couple of changes, then you say, well, we've already made these changes, and nobody really said anything about it, so let's just go on the rest of the way. One thing I did additional is I looked at the addresses of the people who supported it, and I used Google Earth and the Assessor to look at those properties. And you know what I found at most of those properties that I looked at? I didn't see a single solar panel. I didn't see a single wind turbine in their backyard that would be allowed, a small one, to help power their homes. So I didn't see any of that. And what I, I don't want anybody to think that this is part of the trend of, you know, going after public or commissioners, because I certainly don't support that. And I'm not going to mention anyone's addresses, but it's all public. It's in the public. And I looked at houses of the commissioners, or sorry, of the planning commission, and I did not see in any of those any solar panels or any wind generating equipment on these homes. And I know some of them have only been built in the past couple of years. And so my thought there is, if there's a commitment to green energy, then why do I not see it in any of the people that are supporting this? But yet the expectation is that in southwest or in rural Lancaster County, everyone out there is supposed to just be happy with giant wind turbines. And so it's one of those things where it's fine if it's not in my backyard, but we want to put it out here. As a side note, part of my research also was that I noticed when there was a push from some people to put up motorsports complexes in the county, there was a task force that was assembled. And in fact, some of that information from that task force, I think it maybe was even back to 2007, is still on the website for you to look at and see what the background and the planning was. I don't think that would be too much to ask for here, to have some type of task force that has records maintained that are easily accessible on the planning commission's website. I just don't think this issue is ripe to be decided at this point in time. And it's great to say that everyone likes green energy, but again, I looked at a lot of houses, and I just didn't see anyone else that supported it as much as people would like it to be out in the rural area. So I don't understand also why, if there were giant wind turbines that prevented people who wanted to build new acreages, why Lancaster County would want to forego that revenue from homes and property versus just putting up windmills. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Richard Holman, Mike Brown, and Ken Yates.
Thanks for giving us the opportunity to speak. My name is Richard Holman, H-O-L-M-A-N. My address is 26230 Southwest 72nd Street, Hallam, Nebraska. I live approximately three miles northwest of Hallam, right in the area that you're talking about. If you guys would drop your change your amendments, we would have three wind turbines within a half mile behind us, and we'd have at least one within a mile and a half to the south of us, and I would sell my place and move. And I've lived at my place for a long time, but what I really want to talk about today is land values and real estates and residences, because it's not a question of if the land values will drop with wind turbines. The matter is how fast and how much. According to greenfieldadvisor.com, our past president, Donald Trump, was quoted as saying land values could drop as much as 75% with wind turbines. I really do believe that could be my place, with three of them right behind my house that I would hear, that I would feel the vibration, and I would see. And I live in the high country. I can see all the way around all four directions. And later on in the article, they said it was approximately 40%. But I believe that if you're in sight and in sound of a wind turbine, it will be at least 50% for a residence, less for land, farmland. But for residents like mine, I paid $45,000 for my place in 1982. I went and talked to my dad before I bought it. I was, I think, 25 years old, and he says, man, I'd never pay that much for that place. It was an old farmstead, the Frank Reka Farmstead, had a hundred year, well, now it's over a hundred-year-old farmhouse on it. The barn was built two years before that to store wood to build the house, had a chicken coop and a brooder shed. In that property, because of the view that it has, the privacy that I have that makes land and residents have value, the comfort that I've had it in the last 39 years, the location for the school district that it is in, for the neighbors that I have, the structure, we have our house built the way we want it, where we want to retire. It's a safe place, good neighbors. If we have more than three cars drive by after 10 o'clock at night, we wonder what's going on. Something's happening. We have a lot of privacy, and our driveway is not that long, is 300 feet long at the most. But the value of that place has increased 600% in those 39 years because we've worked hard. I raise Angus cattle. I have good fences, good lots, all the way around it. I could calve, I only have 10 acres, but I ran 150 cows through there a year, and I put up a big building, 60 by 120 building, that is not only the calving shed, the sale barn, but the machine shed, the shop, and the garage, and we've even had wedding receptions in there. It is our home, and we love it. We're going down Friday night to our neighbor's Tanner Reka, gets seizures really bad, they have to take him to the hospital, they call 911, and he lives, would live closer to those wind turbines, and I think it would kill him if they go in there. And I sure do not want to see that. He's just 21. He has some disabilities, but he is a great kid. For farmland, and I should add, with our house, we know it increases in value, so we insure it for replacement cost because it's always going to keep increasing. But now for farmland value, you buy farmland based on its productivity, maybe its location, maybe it's right next to yours, maybe your grandfather owned it, maybe it's down in the bottom, has good ground, or maybe it's up on top of the hill, and it has the terraces in it and the drainage and all that, but it's basically productivity.
One minute.
The wind turbines will reduce that from erosion, compaction, roads, temperature, and the lack of bees. The true value of a place is its selling price, and in three to five years, all those places, if you let the wind turbines come in, will lose their value, and you will lose the tax base. Right now, we're talking about eight and a half percent of the county. In five years, it'll be 33% of the county that you'll lose. County assessors will try and keep that value, but we can fight it with looking at comparables in there, and we will win. And then the constituents in Lincoln that get the tax burden because of the tax valuations that's lost in the rural areas will be very upset with you guys. And in 10 years, a billion-dollar companies, there's a good chance they'll be bankrupt. If government subsidies go out, like the one in Celine County, they're talking about bankruptcy now.
If you could start to wrap it up, please. You're at five minutes.
All right. Thank you. But I want to say, as President Biden said today, God bless America, I want to say, God bless Lancaster County. I pray that you make the right decision, because if you don't, the only one that's going to forgive you is God.
Thank you.
Mike Brown, Ken Yates, and Bruce Vogel.
I think we're going to take a break after the next two.
Okay.
Boy, I don't know if I want to say anything after that. Thanks, Dick. My name's Mike Brown, B-R-O-W-N. I live at 25100 Southwest 29th Street, Martel. I'm actually three miles due east of the Hallam Coal Plant, and I can see Mammoth there, all that. We moved from Lancaster County so that we could put our kids in Norris School District. And I know this gentleman because my son was president of Delta Epsilon, and Norris did well for our kids. I have a senior that will go into the nursing area at UNL this next year. I also own a grocery store in Gage County, and it's a little, small store, Adams Superfoods. I've owned it for 12 years. I worked prior, before that, at Cook Family Foods. I moved up here from Texas. I'm originally from Oklahoma. Now you know my history. I live in a great place, and that's Nebraska. And I can say that because I've, I spent six years in the nuclear navy, in a submarine, and I've lived in various places, east and west coast, and I wanted to raise my kids in a good location. I'm married a Nebraskan. She lives, or her parents live, up in northeast part of the county or the state. And now, now we don't know what we're going to do. Our land value is going to decrease so much that I will, I guarantee you, close the grocery store because I will have to move. I will have to reorganize my debt. There will be no retirement. My fault, Dollar General's fault that just went in next door to us, who knows? Okay? But now this, because we want to be green? We can be green in other places. I just drove down with my 85-year-old father to Oklahoma City, and we saw wind farm after wind farm after wind farm after wind farm. Okay, no problem. I didn't see one house. None. Now you're trying to put wind farms, a wind farm, in one of the, the second highest populated county in the state. Why? We have a lot of green space out, out west. We have it in the northeast. We have it in the southeast. You can sit here and listen to people from Canada. You can listen to people from the east coast, west coast, global warming, we're all going to die. Come on, give me a break. These, and if I had the time, and I will hopefully because you'll postpone all of this, what, what type of fossil fuel is burned to make the blades, all of the wind turbines? Where do they come from? Where are they being made? Are they being made in China? Some of them are. Where do they get buried? After 10 years, they got to replace, sometimes before that because of the dust particles in the air, and everything gets beat up on the wind blades or the turbine blades? Where do those get buried? They don't, they don't break up. So anyway, I absolutely hope that the Planning Commission will, will see the light here. And you're affecting a lot of people, whether you believe it or not. You really are. And there's people in Lincoln that are, are all green and all that, and so am I. I don't want dirty water. I want clean air. But thank you very much. I appreciate your time and your efforts.
Thank you. Ken Yates. Oh, I'm sorry. Was there questions? I'm sorry. Ken Yates, and then it sounds like we're going to take a break.
Ken Yates, 3240 West Pella Road, member of the Lancaster Wind Watchers. I guess I should spell my name, Y-A-T-E-S. I'm adamantly against the wind farm setbacks being reduced in Lancaster County, Nebraska. We've owned our family land at Southwest 29th and West Pella Road for about 25 years, comprising of 96 acres and an NRD pond. We have grown this property into a wildlife and human life preserve that we're all very connected to. As I'm sure you're all aware, we have the Sheldon Station in our backyard to deal with and its environmental impacts, and now Monolith Materials Company with all of its environmental impacts and their distortions to the residents of southwest Lancaster County. So now the landowner just west of us has signed agreements for two, maybe three mills, and he lives in Lincoln. He's an absentee landowner. Please consider this change to the setback limits very carefully. This directly affects our health and safety. This directly affects our health and safety, peace and enjoyment, and property values, as you have just heard. These are property rights that must be protected for all residents of Lancaster County. We witnessed the windmill farm near Wilbur just the other day. And all of you need to do the same. Get up close to them. See the homes that have been destroyed, and the, and people's lives changed dramatically. Some homes have moved out and demolished their properties, in spite of what has happened. Most, all of our fine neighbors are on the same page as me. As this is an area of many acreages and resident farmers, these mills will cast moving shadow, noise, night flashing lights, constant moving in your line of sight, all of which are very directly connected to health and happiness. We planned on retiring at our property. But this will prevent us from doing so. I'm 63 years old and ready for that time. I've worked very hard, and I've paid for that land. I've got personal experience with the noise that we're all discussing here today. I bought a decibel meter because of Monolith. I have been recording their noise levels. And you also should pay attention to that out there. It is terrible. I've recorded between 37 and 50 decibels, day and night. And at night, it's worse. And in the first and the early morning, when you always want that nice, quiet time? No. It's terrible. So when I hear you guys talking about, or the testimonies that I've heard from the proponents, to increase from where it is today to higher, it's like, really? We can't stand it. It's day and night. And it infiltrates our home. We cannot escape it. And we're trying all sorts of things. Background white noise, TV on, several things. Doesn't matter. It comes right in our home. And I'd also like to point out, all noise is not the same. Some noise is measured with the decibel meter, but it's a different noise. This constant hum, constant drum, is very threatening to our health and safety, and our peace and enjoyment. These are things I paid for to own my property. One more point. The guy right west of us has two, maybe three of them proposed, signed leases right now, just across the fence. There is a bald eagle's nest in that tree that's as big as a Volkswagen. They have fledged several pairs. They fish my pond every day. What's going to happen to those? I hope you will consider your actions very carefully here. And thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to take a break. Let's do maybe about 15 minutes. So, 15, 15. I'm looking at the clock. Yeah. Yeah, 4:25, this one will resume.
I'd like to call back to order the Planning Commission meeting. And we're kind of in the middle of having testimony and opposition on text amendment 20008. Jerry, do you want to call the next three on your list?
Yes. Rebecca Anderson, Sally Shore, and Kami Slauson.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Anderson. I live, oh, A-N-D-E-R-S-O-N. I live at 7545 West Olive Creek Road, Hallam. My husband Darren and I have lived on this 20 acres for about 13 years now. It was our dream acreage. We have the right combination of, we have cattle, we raise golden retrievers. I mean, we're able to do more things than you can do inside town. I'm a mom, a housewife, and I'm also a lawyer, but I'm here today in a personal capacity as our acreage and our way of life is being jeopardized. We're part of the Lancaster Wind Watch, and as part of their group, I'd like to thank you for your time, your consideration, and dedication to Lancaster County. We recognize the challenges you face in creating a prosperous, yet attractive and safe county for the taxpayers. We are a group of Lancaster County residents who want to ensure our fellow taxpayers are properly protected through safe zoning regulations, specifically industrial wind turbine zoning regulations. The Lancaster Wind Watch was established to protect the civil rights and liberties of Lancaster County residents in respect to possible wind turbine development. Our mission is to engage informed citizens while working with our county's decision-makers to establish safe industrial wind turbine zoning regulations. We believe through joint efforts that we can protect the health, safety, and welfare of our community. In an effort to assist you in making informed decisions, we offer a binder of peer-reviewed journals, conference papers, testimonies, and published articles from some of the top wind turbine researchers in the world. We credit the Gage County Alliance for Wise Wind Energy Decisions for compiling this binder and assembling this research on the medical effects of industrial wind turbines. You will find that the experts represented inside are independent of their review, which is key in establishing subjectivity. Recognizing the amount of this information contained, there are summaries and conclusions for most of the documents provided. Lancaster Wind Watch is not anti-wind. We are not about shutting down the project, but we're here to support Lancaster County residents and board members, working together to create a safe future for all Lancaster County residents. We look forward to uniting in our goal to provide what is best for Lancaster County citizens with a positive outcome for all residents. So we're presenting you a hard copy of this binder, and I think we've previously submitted electronic copies and PDF to the Planning Commission, and that we ask that they be made part of the record of this meeting. And then just, I had a neighbor provide us the letter, and I don't think he got it in in time, but it's kind of a unique perspective because he came from Oklahoma where he was living by wind turbines. And so this is from Joel Daring. He lives at southwest 58th and West Olive Creek Road. Having reviewed the Planning Commission documents, I would like to voice my opposition to the setback limits proposed in this current iteration of industrial intrusion in our neighborhood. Our family survived the proposition construction and startup of the wind energy project located near Lawton, Oklahoma. The current setback proposal is apparently ignorant of the reality associated with living in the vicinity of these industrial projects. The project construction and operation we endured in Oklahoma is called the Blue Canyon Project. It has grown into significant industrial complex with what must be, at this time, over 75 turbines. As the issue of setbacks is discussed, let me state for the record that our personal experience with living through the construction phase was not positive. The company was not responsive to the needs of our neighborhood, not abusive, but generally not responsive. Once the project was in operation, we fully realized the intrusive nature of the industrial plant that had been constructed on our horizon. Our once-clear dark night skies were now forever dominated by the flashing red hazard beacons atop each tower. The most intrusive aspect of living near these structures was the constant noise.
One minute.
When the breeze was out of the north, the constant drumming noise that the towers produced penetrated into our home. Closing the doors and windows offered no relief. It was an intrusion from which you could not escape. The distance from our house to the base of the nearest tower was 6,311 feet, as measured with Google Earth Computer. These industrial plants should not be constructed in settled areas. From our personal firsthand experience living in the proximity of turbines, any discussion regarding setbacks of less than 6,000 feet from dwellings is simply ignorant of reality. The Commission would be acting in ignorance if it were to move forward in accommodating the industrialization of our beautiful community. We currently contribute in full measure to the well-being of county residents as we host the Sheldon Power Station and Monolith. That's plenty. Carpeting our community with a boondoggle industrial turbine complex would be unwise and unwelcome intrusion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Should I just leave this here?
Yes.
Yeah, you will take it.
It's on title.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have Sally Shore, Kami Slauson, and Don Schmidt.
Hello. Oh, I think she left her mask.
Oh.
Becky, I think you left your mask.
Your mask.
Okay, good afternoon. My name is Sally Shore, and I live in Hallam by the power plant. Lancaster County contains fertile-
Wait a minute, can you spell your last name for us?
Sorry, S-C-H-R-O-E-R.
Okay, and can you give us your address, too?
Yeah, well, yeah. I got permission to just give my town.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Sorry.
That's okay.
There's other reasons. All right. Lancaster County contains fertile farmland and wonderful grazing pastures. It would be foolish to forsake these natural and renewable areas for wind turbines that will forever alter the land and its fertility. The county is comprised of multiple dwellings throughout all of the urban and rural areas. Much like the city of Lincoln does not want to pursue wind turbine development within the city due to the risks regarding wind turbines, so we out in the county want the same protections. Commercial wind turbines do not belong in this populated area. The Planning and Zoning Commission is responsible for guarding the property rights and health for all residents in the county. You have heard and will continue to hear from many opponents sharing their opinions, experience, and research with you. We're doing our best to find more peer-reviewed research for you guys to go through. The evidence for wind turbine disturbance and destruction in families and communities is extensive. There's hundreds of thousands from around the world who've spoken up, they've experienced it and studied it. And that binder, that has a lot of the information for you. The Health Department has already spent hours extensively researching the impacts of wind turbines in the community and the initial development of the regulations and again two years ago. The recommendation was for 37 decibels at night and 40 decibels during the day. In order to meet those noise limits with wind turbines that would potentially be used in the county, a setback of one mile was the minimum recommendation. The county board, our government representatives, voted against the Health Department findings and went with physical setbacks that would be close to a half-mile from a residence when they changed the regulations to five times the turbine height. If the town of Hallam, which I live near, can set one-mile setbacks to protect the residents of its community, why can't my county board do the same? Why are my property rights not being held up equally with those of the residents of Hallam or Lincoln? Why are the health impacts caused by wind turbines being thrown out when there are thousands of people across the world complaining of them when they're placed too close? The Planning Commission has a duty to protect my property rights and my health from the consequences of improper zoning for these industrial machines. Wind turbines have a place in the renewable energy portfolio that we, as a world, need to pursue. Lancaster County, let's do it wisely and consider the destructive community impacts when zoning regulations allow these to be built too close to homes. Outside of Lincoln, Waverly, and Hickman, there are 33 people who live per square mile. Now, at Saline County, they have 12 people per square mile living outside of the Cree area. They're suffering consequences of improper zoning now. My first visit a couple weeks ago to the Milligan 1 wind facility, which is only a couple months into operation, was pleasant, but the turbines were not operating that day. Another visit last week on an evening with a gentle wind, you couldn't feel it at the ground, but you could hear the wind turbines, and I felt like I was at an airport with a constant swishing. On January 13th, 2021, residents living three-quarters of a mile from a turbine were awoken to 65 decibels of noise from the wind turbines. Again, on January 11th, 2021, a day with air heavy from moisture, many people in the Milligan 1 project area reported being awoken at 4:30 a.m. A resident explained to me that when the wind changed, the turbines had to shut down, reposition themselves, turn, and one by one, using electricity from the power grid, start back up. The noise continued until 8:30 in the morning. A resident who lives half-mile to the closest turbine felt as though she was living next to a busy four-lane highway. Saline County regulations state that noise should not violate 60 decibels at the property line, much less hundreds of feet within it. They are working to correct the setback limits now to protect the health and properties of an area with one-third the population of rural Lancaster County. Using sound limits for setbacks is more accurate for health purposes, but they are difficult to enforce. Proper physical setbacks that match the noise limits are necessary to avoid future issues regarding violations of noise standards. I take it for granted that our local officials would use all of this knowledge in their decision-making. Every decision made is as though each person themselves would live with those consequences. Please wait to move forward on any recommendations until a host of applicable research is presented that actually overturns what we've already decided. You are charged with protecting my health and property value. You are not charged with solving the climate change problem that we're facing today. We'd like you to work on it, but you don't have to fix it for everybody. Use wisdom. I ask God would give you justice, mercy, and humility, particularly in this case, that you would be wise concerning the work already done in this area and not be subject to hasty decision-making. Consider the known impacts, the annoyance, negative health impacts, lower property resale, destruction of the community, and other unintended consequences of improperly zoning commercial wind turbines. Commercial wind turbines are wrong if you have to set them too close to a dwelling.
You're past your five minutes, so if you could kind of wrap it up.
Sorry, I'm trying to talk fast. Reducing the setbacks even more will open up our entire county, including Branched Oak, Hickman, and Waverly, to wind intrusion as well. Those are things to keep in mind. Wind turbines should not be built closer than one mile from a dwelling. Please wait to move forward on any recommendations until we can spend more time discussing more research that overturns what the Health Department has already advised. Sorry for going over my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Kami Slauson, Don Schmidt, and Terry Madsen.
My name is Kami Slauson, that's S-L-A-U-S-O-N, and I live at 25235 Southwest 29th Street in Martell, Nebraska. I am going to try, just for a quick minute here, I don't know if it will work or not, but to get a picture to display. Is it displaying out to everyone? I'm not sure.
It is.
Okay, so this is looking out the back of our property, and as Richard-
Other way.
Perfect.
Awesome. As Richard Holman and Ken Yates said earlier, if the setbacks were to change, it could impact us because we would have two, maybe three, wind turbines going right across this area. In the picture you can see here, this is Sheldon Power Station, and we have our farm animals and everything out here through this field. My husband and I, along with our three young children, live on 20 acres in Martell, Nebraska. We have lived there for almost nine years. We live exactly one mile east of Sheldon Power Station and own another 80 acres of farmland just down the road. Over the years, it has become very apparent to us that this is a highly-desired location for wind energy, so much so that we were contacted in person by NextEra reps in the summer of 2019. In order to make the most of these five short minutes of time, I will get straight to the point. Less than one month, that is the amount of time that myself, my husband, and our neighbors have had to wrap our heads around a setback change that could impact us all so greatly. In that extremely short amount of time, we have raised awareness and done our best to make our opposition heard. As of my count yesterday, there are 152 letters of local, yes, I'm emphasizing that word "local," and personal opposition. 116 of those letters come from rural residents, and 36 letters of opposition come from residents living within Lincoln City limits. In contrast, there are 58 letters of support. Only two of those letters of support come from rural residents, while 56 of them come from residents living within Lincoln City limits. However, I think it's extremely important to note that every single letter of support except for four of them comes from email addresses that end in @EveryActionCustom.com. We've done some research, and the best that we can understand, this is a for-profit lobbyist group based out of Washington, DC. I beg you to keep that in mind when considering the true level of local support versus opposition. I would like to very quickly highlight two large points of concern, that no matter where you fall, on how great or how minimal their effects are, it simply cannot be ignored that they do have some level of effect. Those are shadow flicker and infrasound. I could go on and on, but there are simply too many unknowns about how truly harmful these could be, and simply want to urge the Planning Commission to give themselves the proper amount of time to research the actual threat of these. Please watch the videos, or better yet, go out to a wind farm and experience this for yourselves. You simply cannot make such an impactful decision without doing so. Others have highlighted so many impacts that should also be thoroughly researched and considered, such as the effect on wildlife, the long-term changes in the land, the risk of crop loss, the potential of a warming effect that is created in the surrounding air and soil, damage and destruction to county roads during material transport, the potential of huge losses in land and property values, and more. Additionally, this past October, 46 turbines were shut down in Iowa because the manufacturer of these particular turbines had blades upwards of 175 feet in length that broke along their length and fell from the sky. The list of concerns is far too lengthy to get through in my five minutes of speaking time. There is entirely too much conflict surrounding this topic to make such fast decisions. We have provided the Planning Commission an electronic binder with 73 articles discussing these various concerns. I'm going to end this by painting a picture for you. Close your eyes, if you would, and imagine this. Imagine there becomes news of a fruit tree. This tree bears fruit that cures serious illness, and its leaves are said to be a greener form of everyday medicines and healing. Wow, sounds amazing. Many start implementing plans to get these trees planted right away. These fruit trees, however, only grow in wide-open rural areas, and there is a large amount of concern, along with studies, that suggest the roots of the trees may contain a poison, a poison that could be leaching into the soil and into the nearby drinking water of rural residents who live near them. As people in the county learn about this, they become concerned and don't want to live near the trees. However, they still want the potential benefits of these trees. Lucky for them, because most of these county residents don't live rurally where the trees grow, they can have the benefit without the risk. But what about those rural residents? Don't they matter? Stop and ask yourself, what do you do?
One minute.
Do you plant the trees for the greater good and overlook the possible risks involved? Do you wait to plant until further research can be done? That's what all of us rural residents in Lancaster County are wondering. Do you care enough about potential risks for others, or do you overlook them simply because they don't affect you? Thank you for your time.
I have one question.
Oh.
Just one quick question. So the picture, you said it's one mile, the power plant was one mile east of-
Yeah, we live 1.1 miles east of it. Yep, so if there were to be changes made, that would be happening in our backyard.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Don Schmidt, Terry Madsen, and Tyler Robach.
Got a handout.
If you could just put them in the folder up on the desk there.
I'll put it in there. My name is Dan Schmidt, S-C-H-M-I-D, 2350 U Road, Dwight, Nebraska, which is outside your Lancaster County area. You might ask why I'm here testifying from 30 miles up to the northwest. I'm part of a statewide group, Nebraska Coalition for Responsible Energy. I've sent you via email before a copy of our handout here outlining various things that wind turbines can do to those living among them out in rural Nebraska. So in here, if you have the electronic version, there's over 170 references you can click on, many of them peer-reviewed studies. This handout I just gave you, which I'd like part of the record, is on infrasound. There's over six, there's six peer-reviewed studies in here that you can go study it further if you like. So I'm going to give you just a quick perspective from outside of your county, what it looks like is happening to those of us looking from the outside. You've studied this in 2015, 2018, 2019, you made some changes. It looks to us from the outside that all of a sudden, you have two or three commissioners who want wind energy come hell or high water. It's not about any changes in wind turbines. It's not about reduce of threat to those of us living in rural Nebraska. It's just that, let's look at this again because we want wind turbines. What has changed in that amount of time is the height of these turbines, they're higher, and from what I read, they'll produce more harmful effects, not less. and from what I read, they'll produce more harmful effects, not less. If the noise really is less from these newer turbines, then why do you have to change the noise restrictions? They should be able to fit them within what you already have. So that's just my perspective, looking from the outside in. So on your four amendment changes, I would be against the first three. That fourth one, if you adopt that, I would say that you would have a noise group of your choice, of your Health Department's choice, not the wind company's choice. I would add that on to that statement if you adopt that. Infrasound's a real thing. It's not measured by anything. You use these DBA-weighted measurements, they don't measure, sorry, they don't measure And like I say, there are peer-reviewed studies depicting or outlining the harmful effects of this infrasound. Dr. Mariana Alves-Piera from Portugal has studied infrasound for 30 years in the aerospace industry. So these effects are chronic, over years. They might not show up for 20 years under these turbines. But she's studied them in aerospace workers, and it has all the effects outlined in this handout I gave you. Abnormal thickening of the pericardium, the sac around your heart, abnormal thickening of blood vessel walls, pulmonary fibrosis, vibroacoustic disease, changes of brain activity, sleep disturbance. This is all documented in her and other studies. And it really has nothing to do with these noise regulations that you currently have. All this noise is audible noise. You have to use a different scale, a dB linear scale, to try to pick up the infrasound. I heard last night that this infrasound is no more than your heart. Well, that was news to me. I went out and looked it up, and it's from one study. It's not a peer-reviewed study, it's from Australian acoustic consultants, and they use a DBA scale, not dB linear, so of course it wouldn't pick up the majority of the energy of this infrasound impacting the body. So, your name is Lincoln, Lancaster, so you have a tough job. Are you going to, you going to look at the whole county, including rural residents, or just Lincoln? And that's coming out, that's, you've heard a lot of pros from inside the city of Lincoln, but they're not going to have to live them. They're not going to be the ones that live among these, so thank you for listening. Questions?
Thank you.
You bet. Thanks.
Okay, Terry Madson, Tyler Robach, and Bruce Vokoun.
My name's Terry Madson, M-A-D-S-O-N. I live near Nelson in Knuckles County here in Nebraska. I belong to some of the same organizations that Dan does. I'd like to just add a bit to what he said about infrasound, probably not well-known, but infrasound was explored as a weapon of war in about 1918 by the United States military. They were able to produce very dramatic results. They were somewhat inconsistent, person to person, because they're, apparently, people are more or less susceptible, depending upon some unknown physical conditions within them. But the reason that they ended up abandoning it was they could not control the directionality well enough to make it a viable weapon. So it's a real thing, and the testimony I've heard from lots of different wind developers is they tend to try to sweep the DBA over the top of the infrasound, because nobody understands it very well, they understand the downsides of it, and so there needs to be more scientific review of it so that you can deal with what the effects of it are on humans. And that is kind of the topic that I'm going to get into. By the way, I'm going to skip a whole bunch of stuff you've heard 12 times already today and get to the meat of it. Wind developers want short setbacks for obvious reasons. We don't know how to argue for longer setbacks because of the absence of science. I've got a subject here, though, that I think adds a little to that. In the United Kingdom, in 2016, a study was completed by St. Andrews University and involved Badgers, of all things. And what it amounted to is they identified Badger sets within a kilometer of existing wind turbines, operating wind turbines, and then they identified additional sets at about 10 kilometers, which is about six miles. A kilometer's 3,280 feet. And so you can't collect a sample from a Badger. They wanted to explore cortisol levels, because cortisol in all mammals and some higher vertebrates, some other vertebrate animals are indicative of physiological stress of one kind or another, too hot, too cold, too much noise, lots of different stressors. It's a steroidal hormone made in the adrenal gland. The hypothalamus tells the body when to disseminate it. Once it's disseminated, it raises blood sugar, increases circulation, oxygen, and so forth, and it feeds the fight-or-flight response in mammals, and, as I said, other vertebrates. So they collected samples from the Badgers, and they measured for sustained cortisol levels. The Badgers close to the turbines had 264% more cortisol than the Badgers at a distance. And so a sustained level of high cortisol affects the immune system. You're more susceptible to disease. When you do get disease, it hits you harder. It also affects reproductive performance by decreasing the implantation and maintaining the viability of the fetus. So it has big effects. Unfortunately, or fortunately, however you want to view it, you're not going to know the answer in a year, or even maybe one or two. But this company is asking you to make a decision to allow them to operate, and their leases with the landowners are probably 60 years. A lot of them are 40 years, plus 10 renewal, plus another 10 renewal, all at the discretion of the company, not the landowner. So you're looking at the most part of a human lifetime, and if I could ask you to do one thing, is think really hard whether you want to risk impact to human health over that length of time so that a company can benefit financially, or would you rather err, if there is one, on the side of protecting the human health of the people that trust you guys to look into these things and make good decisions? So thanks for the opportunity to talk. I know it's from out of county, but I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, one last thing. I do have the entire study. I'd like for it to be a part of the permanent record, please.
You want to just leave it up there? Oh, I guess the folder got over there.
Right there. It's just put there. Okay, we have Tyler Robach and Bruce Vokoun.
Good evening, I guess technically now.
Yeah.
So thank you for giving us time. Real first, I'd like to submit this. This is Resolution 1074 from Hamilton County. It shows that the setbacks are actually more than what we have here, so I know it was said that ours are the worst, but I don't think that's the case. I currently live in Roca, Nebraska. I grew up by Kramer, Hallam, Nebraska. My family still owns a lot of land out there. We've actually turned down these proposals that people talk about. I'll try and keep this to three minutes. You can Google anything, you can find any story you want to support your side. We've heard this side, you know, there's all these facts. We've heard this side, there's all these facts. You know, it is what it is. I happen to be with the opposition. I own land in that area. I have a feeling that, thinking for myself, I walk up to one of these wind towers, yeah, probably don't want to buy a house next to that. I look at the commitments that the city has made. You go back 40 years and look at the city of Lincoln, we used to drive into the city of Lincoln on 40th Street, and it was gravel until almost Hy-Vee, till old Cheney. And if back then, if you wanted to put wind turbines, say where Pine Lake or south of there, you probably would have never got it done. So where I live now in Roca is that, just 40 years later. Okay? Look at the $350 million investment we've made in the South Beltway. I've driven an alternative route for almost a year now, as a part of my participation in that. So why would we do anything that might cap that investment we've already put? I could care less about the $25,000 these turbines are going to generate per month for some company out of Florida. You know, 400,000 kilowatt hours is the average for a 1.65 megawatt-generated turbine, and that's about $25,000, according to the mayor's quote this morning at the chamber, that it's 20% cheaper than coal, which I don't know about. We don't know about a lot of things. My big ask, slow down. Take a good look at it. Make it as objective as you can. Someone needs to do the math, and it needs to be done by a third party. There's too much emotion here, there's too much emotion there. This is financially driven, this is also financially driven, but we need to make it as objective as we can, and you can't do that sliding this in like this. Your charter, your duty, is the health and wellness of people and the livelihood of the people of this county. I grew up a no-till farmer. Green has been a thing of my life. That's how we've always lived. I grew up next to Richard Holman. That's how we are. But it's not our charter or our duty as a commission to be green. It's not in it. What's in it are the residents here. Last thing. If you forward-sell your beans at a nickel more than your neighbor, you've got problems in the neighborhood. Think of the problems that this is going to cause within those communities when you have two or three landowners that are going to develop these. And hey, it's their land, I get it, you can do what you want, but there's going to be big problems in those communities. They are not going to unify. We need to be objective about it. There's data out there for us in Celine County. I went to Creed High School. Reach out to Celine County, take the time. Give yourselves the chance to make an objective decision as best you can, because we don't want to be, we don't want, anything I've ever rushed, I've always been like, oops, maybe I shouldn't have done that. We just, we don't want to do that with this. That's my comment.
Sorry, did you spell your last name?
Last name is spelled R-O-H-A-C-H. Yep.
Okay, I believe we have one more speaker, and that's Bruce Vokoun.
Hello, Bruce Vokoun. That's V-O-K-O-U-N, 3745 Pioneer's Boulevard, right here in Lincoln, Nebraska. However, I'm a fourth-generation landowner in the Hallam area, as is, I'm here representing my sister-in-law, who lives on the farm down there, and my brother, who also owns land. It's all inherited land. Mine is already in a trust to my children. What I'm concerned about is it will ruin the possibility of anybody in my family ever wanting to live on that land. I talked to my son, who's a professor at University of Connecticut. They're putting their wind turbines out in the ocean, two miles out, to keep them away from homes. They are pushing geothermal energy to save on the energy consumption. I have researched deeply into energy production, solar, and wind turbines are a Band-Aid. The long-term solution is nuclear power plants, safe and clean, less intrusive on the environment, and they can produce hydrogen, which will lead to fuel cells, which are even more cleaner than anything we can propose right now. So look at the long-term deal, say 20, 30 years down the road. If this energy company goes bankrupt, or their production is not profitable anymore, what happens to those turbines? They just sit there and rot? Now, I have a daughter that's in Missouri right now, and she will not tell me what her property taxes are, because it'll make me cry. Nebraska is known for very high property taxes, and I know we're trying to reverse that, and I would appreciate anything in that respect. But I told my neighbor about the wind farm deal, and his immediate advice was, sell the property before it goes down in value. That has been in my family for four generations, and will be continued to pass down in my family. I don't want that area to be ruined for any of my kids to live there or to invest in there. I'm investing in my farm and trying to make it more productive. I think that's pretty much most of what I've got to say. Oh, one more thing. I'm not against the turbines, it's just where you're putting them. Why are we not looking at putting them along the Missouri River, next to the power plants? And way back, when the first wind company came around and called and talked to me, I said, well, if this was such a good deal, why didn't the Sheldon Station put them on their property? And they have not yet put one up. That's a good question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next people speaking in opposition are on Zoom. We only have six of the original 11 who signed up, so we're going to have Jamie with Five City TV call out who are the next people speaking, as they are scattered in the list.
Thank you.
We have Cindy Brown. Cindy, if you can unmute yourself, please.
Thank you. I live near Hallam, 25100 Southwest 29th. Brown is spelled B-R-O-W-N, and I appreciate everything you guys are doing. I know it's been a long day for you, so I just simply wanted to express my opposition to the situation and would ask that you consider what's being presented to you today and delay any action at this time. Thank you.
Okay, next, we're waiting on Andrew. Andy, you're online, if you'd like to testify.
What's an end to ear itch aggravation?
We did, we did get a note from Andrew, who was in and out of meetings at work. He said he would like to be recorded, that he is against changes involving reducing setbacks and reducing decibels for wind energy, and he asked that to be reflected on the Next, we have Dale Taylor. Dale, if you could unmute yourself. There you go.
Can you hear me now? Yes, my name's Dale Taylor, T-A-Y-L-O-Y. I live at 3400 West Pella Road, Hallam, Nebraska. I live roughly a quarter-mile straight east of the Sheldon Station plant, so I experience the quote-unquote pollution, the mess that they make currently. What I can tell you is that, of course, all Nebraskans, I hope, would want to see clean energy in our future. I think that would include all the above. We've heard that many times, whether that's wind, solar, nuclear, hydrogen, natural gas, whatever, to get us to a lower carbon emission. The one thing that I've noticed from the Obama years with the coal plant that's in question is when the cleaner coal energy rigs went into play, the heights of the stack over there was increased. There was also what's called a scrubber that was installed. So what I currently see out of the nasty coal So what I currently see out of the nasty coal plant is nothing. As coal is burned, from what I understand now, it's caught, it's scrubbed down, the soot is scrubbed, and they re-burn the soot. So while, yes, there is emissions, it's not like we envisioned the old coal miner days from the 50s, 60s, 70s, and 80s. There's no question, all of us do want to eventually see those type of plants go by the wayside. Getting there is the next question. As a property owner in the area down here, I'm against the wind turbine coming into the area, and I'll just give you a quick example and let it go at that. So right across the road from me is an 80-acre piece of ground that is certain, that has just recently been sold from a developer to four new families. I'm not going to name their names, but I did contact one of them. Two of them are starting to plan on building this spring on their 20 acres, so there's four 20-acre plots. They had no idea this was going on. And so as I have been against this project, as I look at the area, I just think, in one thing in particular, if you're not from the area, if you don't live in the area, or if you don't visit the area very often, I don't think you realize the amount of residents actually live here. So as we look at this 80 acres across the road, and we see four new homes going to be built, within two of them starting this spring, I don't think that people that are for these wind turbines for the county realize how populated it is. My recommendation is, don't change the setback recommendations or the decibel recommendations. Make the energy company live within what the science says is safe. You know, we're in the middle of a pandemic, and we've all been told six feet social distance, right? Wear your mask, stay six feet apart. That's called a setback. So we trust the science, we trust our healthcare experts in trusting in that, that that's going to keep us safe. And yet, when the county health department came out and said, "Hey, to keep residents stay safe, to keep constituents safe, let's keep it at a mile," what do we do as a county? What do we do as commissioners? What do we do as planning? You have a choice to make. We either believe the science, we believe what our experts at the county health department tell us, or we don't. So if we're not going to believe it on one hand, how can we also believe the six-foot? How can we say, "Yeah, we should wear a mask, we should stay six foot apart"? Now, I'm for clean energy, like I stated. I would imagine that everyone in this area down here that is against this is for clean energy. My question would be, why not northern Lancaster County? Why not eastern Lancaster County? Why don't we do a density map of actual residents and potential residents? Okay? That would be my question. Why not look at that as a whole, as a whole county? And if it still fits, let's find an area that maybe there's more open farm ground if we have to have them in Lancaster County, if that's the goal. Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Callie Higgins.
Hello? Can you hear me? Hi, my name is Callie Higgins, last name H-I-G-G-I-N-S. My address is 1900 West Dunraven Lane. Um, sorry, I didn't actually know I was talking, but I have lots of things to say. My biggest question to all of you guys would be, would you want to live next to one of these things? I just really don't think it's a good thing to be like, "We want them, but not near me." I live over where this new casino is going to be, and there's a new development right across the casino that I am certain is probably going to go down in property value, and it will be a low-income area. And then we're going to have potential wind turbines all around us on the west side and the south side of us. And then there's talk of a new prison that's going to go a mile and a half north. I just think it will completely tank the growth of Lincoln to go south of Satillo or to go west of 77. I just think that I would really appreciate you guys to look into all of the research that was presented in Gage County. And just, there were so many promises from Nextera to Gage County, and then it would come about that they were next to lies. Yeah, I, sorry, I was a little ill-prepared. I thought I was just listening, but I, that's my biggest question is, please ask yourself if you would be willing to live in those areas, and then again, what is the rush? Why are we rushing into this and sneaking it in so that way nobody knows about it? But I thank you guys for your time, and that's all I have today.
Okay, we lost Dawn for a second. She is back now. Dawn, if you can unmute yourself.
Okay. Okay, I'm here now. I apologize. It kicked me out just as I went to get on, so I apologize for that. Can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Okay. Um, well, I am, I am Dawn Lippert, it's L-I-P-H-A-R-D-T, and I live at 1777 West Dunraven Court. And I, um, I just found out about this, probably a few days ago. Um, so I'm a little ill-prepared, but I do have an opinion. And so while I'm not opposed to having clean energy, I am opposed to having the wind turbines nearby home. I would like to ask these proponents also if they would also be accepting of these wind turbines near their home within half a mile. I notice most, if not all of these proponents, live nowhere near the potential location of the wind turbines. In fact, one was even as far away as Canada. It's my understanding that wind turbines cause noise, and even Chris Schroeder spoke today that there's not been sufficient amount of time to study this in all the other surrounding issues with the health issues with wind turbines. So I'm going to ask you as a concerned citizen that you step back a minute and really think about what you're doing and do the proper studies that need to be done before making the decision to go ahead with, moving forward with wind turbines. It's my opinion that I don't really care what other counties or states are doing. They're so-called capitalizing on the wind turbines. We need to really look long-term, and just because everybody else is doing it doesn't make it necessarily right for us. In my opinion, wind turbines are unreliable and they're erratic. A 10% change in the wind speed will change output by as much as 30%. We still have to have coal and gas plants anyway because they're so erratic and we wouldn't want our grid to go down. And so we still have to maintain all the stuff and maintenance that we normally would. And my question really would be, how much does it really cost per megawatt for coal? How much does it cost per megawatt for natural gas? And how much does it cost per megawatt for wind? I think that wind actually costs more in what I've been reading, but it's lowered because of subsidies provided to the company. And so who pays the subsidies? I believe the taxpayers do. I think that's also a very expensive upfront cost to install these wind turbines. I also believe that they decrease property values, and they, as Pam Dingman spoke earlier today, potentially huge amount of damage to our roads and our bridges. For environmentalists, I want to know what do they have to say about the inability to recycle these very large turbines when they're, they've outlived their life? Where do they go? I've seen reports that they get buried in the ground somewhere. They're not recyclable. What about the energy use that seriously it takes to build and install these turbines? I think there's a lot of questions that need to be answered, and as a citizen that lives out here in the county, I'm a little upset sometimes that the Lincoln race, one minute, got put in, and nobody knew about it. And I think that it's imperative upon you as representatives to allow citizens to be informed, and you have to let us know what's going on if you want to represent this properly. So I am calling you to step back a minute, do some studies that need to be done, inform the citizens, get us educated, and let us be part of the decision because it will affect all of us long-term. Thank you.
Yes, we have Ben Sochek.
Good afternoon. There's probably not a whole lot that I can say that hasn't been said already, but I'll try and take a shot at it here, and a couple rebuttals from what I've heard earlier I'm sorry, yes. Sochek, S is in Sam, O-U-C-H-E-K, and I'm with 1415 West Cademont Circle. Lincoln, I'm sorry, yes. First, I don't think, again, nobody's against green energy. I don't think anybody would be. But wind energy is not green in any way, shape, or form, like Dawn just mentioned, with all the inputs that it takes, all the, all the product from China that go into the nacelles. Green is the last thing that wind energy is. Also, I did talk to the Hamilton County, I believe, the chairman of their planning and zoning board earlier this afternoon, and people that have earlier said that you have the most, Lancaster County has the most restrictive ordinance is just flat-out wrong. Both Hamilton and Merrick County, I'm told, have two-mile setbacks, and not just from occupied residences, but from property lines. Because as someone else just mentioned earlier, if you go from a residence, then basically you've just taken the right of the person that owned the property, any ability to maybe put a house or sell off an acreage or do something else on other parts of their property. So I, I would think you'd want to go further and go to property lines, not just residences. Not to mention the fact that these, the effects of these things go well beyond property lines. It, it's not like a, there's just a pole sitting there. It's, it's much more than that, I'm sure you realize that. You've just, if, if they put these things in, you've just eliminated the chance of any, anybody else wanting to build on an acreage in these areas. Nobody wants to live in an industrial amusement park, and that's about, that's about what it would be if something like this happens. A lot of people are focused on noise, which that's just one of the negative effects, in my opinion. One of the biggest things about noise, though, is that I haven't heard of anywhere that actually enforces it. What I have heard of is companies going in and violating that rule, but there's no enforcement of it. So people's lives are affected negatively that way. Also, speaking of Nextera, this is a company that went into Webster County and put a 500-foot tall tower up 1,200 feet from a non-participant. It's destroyed his, his property value, his quality of life, and, and his health, because he's the person that is a lead, lead person, I don't know legal terms, I'm sorry about that, that is on a class-action lawsuit against Nextera. That's in Webster County, Nebraska. He knows Nextera pretty well. The attorney from Omaha, I believe, from Omaha, had the saying, "First come, first served." Well, I would think the gentleman that's owned his farm for 39 years was here a little bit before the wind companies were here. My family that's owned a farm that's been in my family for over 100 years were here before the wind turbines. But they don't really care about that. They want the federal production tax credits, and that's all they care about. And it's pretty clear that they're willing to do anything they can to push things, these things in anywhere that they can for that buck. There are plenty of cases of health problems. I think that's one thing that they mentioned, there was no widespread, no, no harmful effects from noise and, and things like that, and that's just not true either. If, if they did something like this, I think the non-participants should more easily be able to sue their neighbors, which really cannot happen very easily currently. The World Health Organization has declared wind turbines as health hazards, and this may not be an appropriate statement, but I think that somebody else alluded to, a lot of people that spoke in favor of these things are in Lincoln and Omaha and in other cities, Norfolk. If they like them... I'm just going to say, if they want these things so bad, put them in Lincoln and in Omaha, and change their zoning so that the people that live out here where we want to be in peace in acreages don't have to put up with them. They can. Thank you for your time.
So that concludes, that concludes the speakers that we have online. It also concludes the people who have signed up for testimony as well.
I did see someone walk in, but maybe they were just here before.
They were in the other room as well.
Okay, okay. So we're ready for questions for staff. Anyone want to go first?
So Steve, the way this is put in front of us is that the county board came forward with four potential revisions to Section 13.048, and the staff is recommending that we approve two of those four revisions. Is that correct?
Correct. The one thing I would note is that the county board didn't actually propose any revisions. They asked us to address four areas. We were able to address three of those areas, but we were not able to address the, the noise standards at all. And so unfortunately, Chris Schroeder with the health department had to leave, but basically, you know, their review in 2015 and again in 2018, that was looking comprehensively. And if they were here and we had time to put it in a report, we would talk about the Health Canada study and all of the studies that were looked at, including the studies cited by other people. And it was their continual recommendation that in order to protect the public health, and they outlined a lot of those reasons in previous staff reports, that the 40 and the 37 was the best way to protect the health of those residents who are not participating. And they didn't pick that, I heard some people say that it was done to stop wind energy. The health department very much and city staff are in favor of wind energy. The health department is very much concerned about climate impacts on the health of our community. But they're also weighing that- But they're also weighing that the health impacts on people who live in the area and have to be close to these turbines is very important. And as noted, the effects of wind turbine noise is a little different than a heating unit or an air conditioner. And a lot of our process in 2015, we had brought in some experts who talked about how noise impacts are, are different. And I thought that was actually quite useful at the time. So our, our recommendation continues to be that even if you're interested in changing the noise standard, there really should be a public process where a specific standard would have been proposed. There would have been time then for the public to understand the pros and cons of a number higher or lower. It would allow time for the Health Department to submit an analysis and the information like they had done in 2018. There would be time for briefings of the Planning Commission as well and, and public information distributed. Those are all the things we think we've done with a lot of these other ones, with accessory dwelling units, with accessory building regulations we've looked at in terms of animal feeding operations and even wind turbines. We've had a pretty big public process to spread that information and, and to have that information available for you to show the various sides of, of that information. And that's simply because of the pandemic and the, and the vaccine distribution, the Health Department staff didn't have any time for that. I mean, Chris Schroeder, who works on a lot of our items, has been, for the last 10 months, having to do other things than his normal land use reviews for us. He's, he's managed to try to get them in, but they, they simply have not had the time. So again, I think it was all of those points as to why we thought if, even if you recommend this should be looked at, it should be looked at as part of a, of a bigger process.
But so, so given the, given what's in front of us and the fact that we have not had that fully vetted process for this matter in front of us, but that, that occurred two years ago or a year and a half ago when we, when we had a more, um, public informed process. I'm not sure that I have what I would need in front of me to even reconsider the first issue, which is to reduce the setback to a non-participating dwelling unit, because we considered that at that time in great detail. And we're not having the opportunity again to have that be part of that, this current process. If I, I'm.
No, I, I understand. We probably had more information previously presented about what is three and a half times versus five times, what have other communities done in terms of their setbacks. And, and as mentioned, some communities have setback as their primarily, primary regulation of health concerns. They don't necessarily have the noise standards. They use a setback. So you have to understand those differences as well.
Other questions for staff?
I do have one bit of additional information, just to address the comment that was made about the three acre rule and it not being appropriate to have a setback to a vacant lot. That was a comment that was, that was made early on in the testimony. We do actually have quite a few things that have setbacks to the residential zoning district, regardless of what's in that residential zoning district. So for instance, both in the city and the county to adult oriented entertainment, there's a thousand foot setback to residential zoning. That residential zoning is a parking lot for commercial use, is, is vacant land, is a detention pond, or residential lots in, in the city that just haven't been built on yet, or acreage lots. We do have things that have setbacks to that. Alcohol has a spacing to the residential zoning. Garden centers even have a setback to the residential zoning. So we don't find that trying to have an appropriate kind of a setback to a vacant lot is something that is not done in other circumstances.
Steve, in those other circumstances where you just described setbacks, is there an area such as the three acres that is a standard that are in other regulations?
Um, no, it is just simply to the zoning line. The, the three acres was actually our attempt to have a compromise. Most people just simply wanted a setback to a property line that was not participating, which would have meant even if you had an 80 acre farm, you, you had to have your, your setback to that, even though there was no dwelling unit on it. So that was really what, what was proposed initially was just, hey, if, if I'm a property and I'm not participating, I should have, you know, an appropriate setback. We were saying, well, this is a compromise. We're going to leave at least three acres that are outside of these things, even though you're vacant.
Do you think that there, I mean, you guys looked at this as a part of this proposal. Do you think there's room to, to reevaluate the three acres?
We, we in the planning department, since that was not a health matter, we, we did look at that. And, and we think that because a three acre area is, was typically is needed for a well and a septic, et cetera, we, we think that's a pretty good standard to keep in terms of what you're trying to preserve off of property that might be 20 to 80 acres. So we, we did spend some time looking at that and, and continue to think that's better than reducing it to two acres or, or to one acre.
Other questions for staff? We don't really have an applicant rebuttal, so.
I would move that we close the public hearing.
Second, Becky is.
Jerry?
Okay. Ball?
Um, yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Bedderton?
Yes.
Raimenios?
Yes.
Becky is?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
I also would move that we amend 20008 as proposed by the planning department. And if that gets a second, I'll explain.
I'll second. Becky is.
I too have questions about the, uh, dropping the five to three and a half times. But what, what gives me pause is the fact that the noise, uh, noise part of 13048 remains in place and becomes a dominant thing that, that oversees it. I do think that that should be included, even if we recommend going to the county board with that. I do think that should be included when we're talking about the noise levels or the studies on those. I think there, there are two things that go hand in hand. But at this point, I am comfortable that the planning department has done a good job of really looking at the non-controversial or less controversial things, but leaving the more controversial ones with the criteria that has been set previously as their recommendation. And I do think, as many people spoke today that were for or against, that there should be the public's input and a long-term study. And that, that the Health Department, once they have their hands clean of the pandemic, that that should be when we should start looking at that.
I, I, that makes a lot of sense to me, Dick. That being said, I think that we do need a, you know, a full vetting if we're going to re-evaluate this. As, as you said, including by the Health Department. We certainly need to defer until the county and the Health Department can fully vet what's in front of them and we can have a more robust public process. That being said, if we're going to review from a substantive perspective, it seems to me that we would kind of review everything as a whole. Um, you know, with the county engineer, for example, testifying that she had some concerns about the road maintenance agreements, those aren't public health concerns, but there's still concerns about the regulations that we would want to revisit as we look at everything as a whole. And if that's the case, then I don't know that it makes sense to make this change to the first, the three and a half to, to go from the five to the three and a half if we're going to revisit the entire regulation that's in front of us, you know, at a more opportune time. So that, that's my counter to your.
Just a question, would you, would you go ahead and add the third party one, though? Or would you hold that?
I, I think that, that we could very easily add that. That's not a substantive thing. It, it adds value and there wasn't any concerns about that. So that would be the one of the four that I would, I think would make sense at this
I will support the motion, but I'll even go a little further than the motion as well. You know, I think wind energy regulation has been before the commission for several years now. You know, this is not a new topic for this commission. And we've gone back and forth with regulations over the past six years. I think this commission has recommended in the past a 45 decibel limit. What I'm looking for is a balance between protecting the health outcomes of our citizens and also trying to encourage the development of this business and this energy source as well. And I'm looking for that sweet spot. And, and I, I think that we have to pay attention to the, the scientific data and, and the potential health outcomes associated with this. That being said, you know, I, I think that we know in our past, we've, we've had recommendations at 45, we've had recommendations at 37, at 40, 50, if you're participating, we have a range of recommendations. What I'm hearing now from the community that works in this field is if we could get a little bump, we think we can, we can do this. And from the historical context that we've had since 2015 on this board, and then also looking at what other communities have done as well, I think, to me, it begs the question, is 42 or 45 out of the question in order to bump up to find that sweet spot? Are, are the health outcomes, as determined by other entities outside of the Lincoln-Lancaster County Health Department perhaps, valid as well? You know, I think there's good argument to be made that with every time of, every type of agricultural use, not just wind farming, but every kind of ag use, there is some nuisance to be had with those uses. That's inherent to the, to the use, to the nature of the land use. And I, for me personally, would like to try to find where Lancaster County can, um, find that sweet spot and that balance of not impacting people's health outcomes, but also allowing for this type of clean energy to develop in our county. Cause I do think it's important to other, um, uh, goals that we have. Climate change goals, climate study goals, the goals of Lincoln Electric System. And those goals and the proponents of those goals, I don't think are any less valid than, than the opinions of, of others. I think they're, they're both very important. I would, if, if other commissioners would, would entertain it, I would certainly love to have a discussion on bumping up that noise level to a 42 or 45, if people would be interested in having that discussion. Dick?
Um, I, I would be very interested in having that discussion, but I would want to wait until the Health Department could weigh in on it. Because what we get delivered to us, both for and against, everybody's got their own studies. And my faith is in the Health Department bringing forth the different options and what their view is, is the best way to go. And so I'm, I'm hesitant to make any recommendation on that until we have more expertise than I have telling us where that sweet spot is. And, uh, based upon what I've heard, it, it sounds like they could get by with 42, but they'd like 45. I need some validation for that to happen.
I, I could be open to increasing the, the decibel, the noise level. And I say that because I was a part of the commission when we first viewed this in 2015. And so if I am remembering correctly, I think we proposed a 45 or a 50, uh, level limit. And so I would be comfortable going back to like a 42 or a 45. But again, I would feel much more comfortable if we had, you know, a full review by the Health Department at this time.
And the only, you know, I don't know what the future holds. The only thing I worry about is that review could be years away. I don't know.
I really think once we get the vaccinations settled down and really moving through the process, that the Health Department's going to have more time to start looking at stuff like this. So I don't see that as too long of a, the longest I could see it, Tom, would be the year 2021. I, then I think they're going to be in much better shape to, to deal with things.
Well, and I guess from my pers, and I don't disagree with you, Dick, at all. At some point, we have to find that balance too. And if we, and, and there's a lot of stress, and, and I'm not saying there's not, but we need to continue this conversation moving forward too. And, and so, you know, if this conversation doesn't continue forward, you know, in a year's time, I would certainly be very open to revisiting the conversation and think we should. Because I think, you know, as commission members, if we, you know, enact rules and regulations and we see that they're not functionally working, then I think it's our job to revisit them and, and get to the point where we can, if we can find compromise, find it. And this has been a hard, this has been a hard process and a long six years, but I think it's, it's, it's our job to find, to find that, that balance.
Could we ask the planning department to stay in touch with the Health Department to initiate that study as soon as possible?
I don't, I don't know. I don't, I don't know how other commissioners feel.
I mean, it could be a second motion, but I'm just, it may be just a suggestion to the department to continue their activities when appropriate.
Here comes David. Certainly outside of our purview right now.
David Carey, Director of the Planning Department. So to address that idea, I think it certainly would be appropriate if you wanted to make the comment in whatever action you take today to say that the intention is to have that ongoing conversation with the timing of a potential effort by the Health Department and the Planning Department being part of that, that, that would be appropriate. I think you'd probably need to leave it pretty open-ended because we really don't know what that means yet. But certainly if you wanted to make that part of your recommendation, that certainly could be part of the record and we would take that seriously.
David, do you have an understanding? We, we've heard throughout testimony today that people want to slow down, they want some more time, they want more study before moving forward. I, some people said they wanted to reconvene another group. How do you feel? How does the planning department feel about what is needed?
I, I think, I think that our position on that part of this discussion is that we feel like the, the, the level of effort that was done in the past is, was, was good, that we got a lot of good information put on the table, a lot of discussion. There were, there was a lot of back and forth from all different positions on this topic. So I think that type of effort would be appropriate and I would not be against doing that again. I think the main point that we needed to make in this staff report for, for this current proposal was that we really were not in a position, because regardless, the Health Department needs to be a central figure in that effort, whatever that takes in shape and form, that we just weren't able to do that net right now.
Sure.
So that, that was the more of the point that.
Cause I think, you know, I don't know how other commissioners feel, but I, I think we've gotten to the point perhaps through this study that the noise is, and the potential annoyance caused by that noise is the issue? I don't know if other commissioners feel the same, but that's how I feel.
Um, if I go back to when we first looked at this, it wasn't always the, the noise, it was the flicker.
Right.
Was a huge impact as well.
Right. But I think we've.
Right. But I think we've matured past that. I think that now, today, we are left with the noise.
Well, I think my comment on that would be the particular parts of the regulation that we were asked to consider.
Referring to today. Correct. Right, right. And so do we want to open up that discussion again? Maybe we do, I don't know. I don't, I think that this board has matured to the point, and we've matured with the study, that, you know, do we want to open it up again to, you know, other feedback that isn't scientific? So, I don't know.
David, could you, is this something that we could have a task force that is contin, I don't know if I want to say continually up and running, but I guess maybe I do. You know, it continues on, it doesn't really have an end date, just because this is an evolving situation. Or, you know, at least until, you know...
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. What I would recommend on that, though, is that I think a task force is normally put in place for a specific moment in time with some limitation on, you know, timeframes of getting the work done and then having a report that's brought back for consideration and then usually some action is taken on that. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that we should have this kind of rolling continual task force. We can always appoint a new task force every few years if we need to, if something changes and it merits that. I guess before we go too far down this discussion, I do want to kind of bring us back to the item that's before you, because we definitely are recommending that you take some form of action on this item before you as a result of this hearing. So as I was saying earlier, you absolutely can recommend other things happen in the future or recommend how to do those and that it be considered by the planning department and the health department. But we do have this item itself that should be acted on today.
Tracy? I also think we've got to wait until the health department is capable of being, participating and being a significant participant. And that may take some time. So I think our, any task force we recommend putting together should be based upon their schedule and availability.
As far as looking at what is before us today, I have no problem, you know, with, with the last point, you know, and having, having a noise study completed by a third party. I think, I think that's very feasible and a very wise move. I would be okay with reducing the setback to a non-participating dwelling unit, simply because we had that before. And I think that, from what I saw before, that was okay. But I don't know that I'm open to changing, you know, two or, two or three. I think those are kind of a hard no for me right now, not without further study.
I agree.
And I would agree to the fourth item with a third party, but from a holistic standpoint of changing the setback and influence of noise to that as well, even though I know they're independent items, is of question and concern. And obviously, I haven't been part of the previous, you know, board when this was presented, but I still think there is a number of questions around the impact of that. And it was made at that time for a reason, all right? Now we're trying to redact it. So I still think that there needs to be more, more study there.
I can certainly understand that perspective.
Yeah. And Commissioner Ball just said exactly what I had been thinking as somebody who is still new-ish and not a part of the previous discussions and debates. And because of the current situation we're in and the, the timing of this request from the county commissioners, the lack of being able to have a formal briefing and to get more information makes it very difficult for me to want to support things that could have significant impacts. My children raise the alarm about the health and safety impacts of climate change consistently, and I certainly support the development of alternative forms of energy. I support the Climate Action Plan that's been adopted by the city of Lincoln. And as we move forward, I appreciate the need to be looking at those things. But right now, the fourth item, absolutely, I can be in support of that. The other ones, right now, I don't feel like I have adequate history and information to make a quality-informed decision.
And I would just make one additional comment. I think I am too a proponent of alternative energy. And one positive I heard out of the comments today was that there wasn't really an opposition, well, at least the majority was in opposition for, you know, consideration, but making sure that we get it correct. And I think that is something we just need to evaluate, you know, as we see this happen. And it has been some time. And I think Commissioner Tom, that you said, you know, we are close, maybe not as close as we want to be at this point, but I think we have moved the needle from what I've heard in terms of trying to make a decision for this to happen.
Do we need to amend the motion?
Yeah, I was going to say, if I withdraw my motion...
I think what we could do is just vote on it. We would vote yes and no, and then we could have another motion.
Well, you, do you want to amend it now? I think you would need to make an amendment to amend it now.
Yes.
And then we'll vote on that amendment, and then we'll vote on the main motion.
That is correct. Yeah, I, yeah, that's exactly what I was going to say. I think, I think we need clarity about the motion.
So if you guys want to amend it, you need to do it now.
Yep.
I would move to amend Dick's motion to approve the fourth consideration brought forth by staff to, which I can't find.
The noise study.
To approve...
To approve that the third party, clarify that the noise study shall be completed by a third party, and to deny the other recommendation.
Second, Cor?
And I'll just say really quickly, I'll, I'm going to vote no on this, just because I think we can, we could move forward on the first, in addition to other items listed here. So that's the only reason I'll vote no on this.
You guys ready for a vote? Okay, Jerry?
Vote on the amendment.
This is the vote on the amendment to accept the fourth consideration related to the noise study being completed by a third party and denying the other staff recommendation. Okay? Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry.
God? Sorry.
Go ahead.
Sorry, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, and I apologize if you also hear my daughter's legal advice. I just wanted to mention, if you guys would make clear of all four items, it sounded like you said you guys were approving the one recommendation and then denying the other, but there's actually four in front of you, so we just need to be more clear on all four.
I'll try to do that.
All right, thank you.
So it'd be to approve 13048J and to deny the other three, which are 13048G, H, and I.
Correct. Do you want to be more specific than that, or use, okay. That is correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Ready for vote?
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
No.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Beckius?
No.
Cor?
Yes.
Okay, motion?
To amend.
Failed. To amend, passed, four to, yeah, five to two.
No.
Four to two.
Four to two, you're right.
So that motion did not...
It failed.
All right, it failed.
Failed for lack of a fifth vote.
Because you don't have five.
So I thought that was on the main motion.
That is on the main motion, that's correct, sorry.
Oh, so...
I keep forgetting this is the motion.
So that...
That was the amendment.
That was the amendment.
That was the amendment.
That did pass.
It's just majority?
Yes.
Okay. So where are we at?
We're back to...
Being on the main motion.
The main motion...
So did that one pass or fail? What did we decide?
It did pass as an amendment, it can pass on a simple majority.
Okay.
Now you have to pass the main motion, which was a motion to approve, but as amended now.
Okay.
So a majority of those present or a majority of the board?
Of the board.
So you need five.
A majority of those present.
So with only four votes...
But we get to vote again.
No, you're right.
Oh, okay.
Right, that just passed the amendment.
That was the amendment. Now we do on the whole thing, which includes the amendment.
As amended.
As amended.
And it could be amended again, as we have commissioners who said there were other pieces of that they would potentially think we could move forward on, so the...
So now we are voting on...
Main motion.
The main motion as amended. So really, we are just voting on accepting the modifications to section 13.048J, approving that, but denying any modifications to 13.048G, H, or I.
Correct.
That is correct. Okay. Ready for a vote?
Hmm.
Okay. Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
And Cor?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried as amended, six to zero.
May I make a recommendation?
Yes.
I don't know that this is official. However, I think this is a topic that would require and necessitates additional time and dedication from this board. I would like to see that because I think that we do have opportunity here in Lancaster County to, to find a balance between the development of this energy source with the, you know, positive health outcomes of our residents, too. I think there is a middle ground to be found, and I really would like to encourage not only this group, but the county board, to dedicate additional time and resources to figure that out, hopefully in a very timely manner as the pandemic allows. Because I think we do have missed opportunities here that I would hate to see go away. I would really like to find that middle ground if we could.
I agree.
I would support that.
Yes.
And I think that most of the, do most commissioners agree with that?
Yes, I appreciate your comments. I think it's important that that's in the record, and I'm very much in support of what you said and how you stated it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, please note that we are suspending the opportunity for anyone wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda until further notice. I would call for a motion.
Move to adjourn. Beckius?
Second, Edgerton. Jerry? Okay, Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
We are adjourned. Thank you.